I should probably ask who for real is going because I think there's only one person like Mike and maybe.
I would go, but I'm out of talent.
I don't know.
But I thought I did.
Oh, yeah?
To me, that was.
Was it good?
Yeah, that was.
That's worth.
I've talked to probably eight senators and not just from the area.
Somebody needs to work on that clock up there.
That means you're trying to go.
Our batteries. Hey, well, you know, it's it's the daylight savings time, isn't that where you're supposed to change your batteries?
Oh, is that it? Oh, okay. Well, that'll be coming up.
I like to just adjourn and be done.
Yeah, not tonight. We're gonna be here all night.
I just already got in Boise.
What have you been in Boise for?
Well, for the game.
Oh, yeah.
And I came back Sunday and went back over to Operation Board meetings yesterday. Had to go over this terrible world.
Why didn't you just stay?
I didn't want to sit in a hotel room for a day and a half.
Don't you have a daughter over there?
No.
Oh, I thought you had a daughter over there.
I gotcha. Thank you.
Boise. Well, good.
I know one of these days if I tip off backwards, I disappear. I'm just gonna stay down here. I'm not gonna come back up.
That's pretty tall. It's all done in love, all right now.
Michael, how are you?
I'm good.
You made it back to the frozen chosen just last night?
Last night.
Oh. Oh, yeah. Well, welcome home to the frozen chosen.
Been nice with our last week.
Yeah. All right, well, welcome everyone. We're this is a kind of a pre-meeting to our normal meeting, so we'll just kind of jump right in. Uh, we welcome to all of you here. We're glad to have our planning and zoning commission members here for this presentation, as well as anyone else who uh would uh would like to see this presentation. I think it'll be interesting. So, with that, we're gonna go ahead and just turn the time over right now to Aaron Denny, who is who has prepared this and let him take it and run with it. Aaron, go ahead.
All right, so good evening, city council and mayor. I'm excited to present tonight. I've spent the better part of a year researching workforce and housing, and I have some really exciting things to share with you. But as part of the economic development department, I spend a lot of my day today thinking about jobs, right? So jobs can be created through starting a business, retaining or expanding our existing businesses, or attracting outside businesses into our community. And it should be no surprise that this is one of the two focuses of the Invision Madison project. So when we look back at that that project that we did for the community, the general sentiment from the study was there was not enough jobs to ensure economic security for the families here in Rexburg. And so what we heard back from a lot of the people were they wanted um jobs for their children and grandchildren so they could stay or return to Rexburg, right? People wanted their families to be close to them. And if we're gonna achieve that, we need um good quality jobs. And despite some loud voices, you can see I pulled this from the Invision Madison findings, there is um some significant support for growth, especially when it provides jobs and a higher quality of life. And um so I thought about how are we going to create these jobs for our community members? And it's through expanding Rexburg's sense of place. So there's this idea of sense of place, why place? And there's this quote up here on the screen. It says, "The present economic research finds that business wants talent, but talent wants place." So more businesses are relocating to places. And I've seen that all over, but I really like how this gentleman sums it up. So our community needs to have a sense of place that talent's looking for, except we have a little bit of a problem right now in Rexburg, and it's a housing problem. So if you look at this graph, it shows some national data. In general, it's become way more expensive to buy a home compared to renting. You can look at the top right, the cost to buy has just skyrocketed. This chart starts from nineteen seventy, so you get a good overview. This map also helps demonstrate this next one here, how more expensive it is to buy home just in the last three years. So you can see that big color change from the left side to the right. It's really becoming out of reach housing for the middle class. And then this graph demonstrates the income needed to afford a median-priced home, right? So I said, we have a housing problem. If you look back in twenty twelve, and it just took forty-five thousand dollars to afford the median-priced home, whereas now you're looking at around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And incomes really haven't caught up with that. If you look at this chart, you can see that huge disparity, right? You see at the bottom, the median household income has increased slowly, but at the top of the graph, you can see it's just skyrocketed. And if you can't tell, it's from nineteen eighty-five to now, that graph. Then, of course, Idaho. It was shocking to learn that based on income levels, Idaho ties with Montana and Hawaii for the lowest affordability in the nation for housing. Redfin also ranked Idaho as the most overvalued housing market at forty-one point eight seven percent over. And then just to for good measure, Idaho is the second worst state for housing shortage, just behind California. So there really is some really great numbers to help us understand that there is a housing problem in Rexburg. And we've heard, you know, over in Boise, it's really bad. So I've looked up some local data for Madison County, and you can see from this graph from twenty-ten to today, home prices have gone up a hundred and nine percent, while wages have only gone up thirty-nine percent. So it's true across the country for Idaho and also for here in Rexburg. In Madison County, sixty-four percent of a single earner's wages go to a median-priced home mortgage. That's more than double the maximum. Um, there's usually the twenty-eight percent rule, right? Twenty-eight percent of your income should go towards housing. You can maybe get up to thirty percent. There's a few lenders that are even stretching that up to fifty percent, but even at that wide um stretch amount, right, it's still more than double.
Can I ask a quick question?
Um, I we have a lot to cover, so just let's just save it till the end. I appreciate it, though. I'm excited to answer lots of questions. And then looking at the data for Madison County, right, it's at sixty-four percent affordability. It's the same affordability as Southern California. So you got San Diego County, California, sixty-eight percent, Los Angeles County, California, sixty-six percent, which was really shocking to learn. So what's our median-priced home in Madison County? It's just over four hundred thousand dollars. To afford a home that's this price point, you'd have to make over a hundred thousand dollars annually. Rexburg's cost of living really is providing a significant obstacle for people to be able to afford homes here. In fact, the consulting firm DCI found in their twenty-twenty-two annual report that the top three factors for relocation were related to housing costs and availability. So it's definitely something from the economic development standpoint, when we're attracting jobs or creating jobs here in Rexburg, you really do have to think about housing and the affordability. And not, you know, every job here in Rexburg pays over a hundred thousand dollars. So we can't really let ourselves believe, going back to Invision Madison, that our children and grandchildren will stay or move to Rexburg when people can afford homes here. So it's really challenging. Just last year, we had a large um tech firm from Utah seriously looking to come up to Rexburg. And they start their employees at six figures, so they're really good, high-quality-paying jobs. But once they saw Rexburg's housing market, they just totally backed off. So there's interest, there's interest in Rexburg, but the housing market is just so bad that it's kind of hard for us to um to create jobs. So let's say you're looking to buy something below the median home price, right? So let's cut that in half. Cut that in half, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. You could afford that home if you're making sixty thousand dollars, which is pretty average salary. So it's really challenging, right? You can't afford a whole lot in Rexburg just on sixty thousand dollars a year. Both the National Association of Realtors and the National Association of Home Builders have talked about this. The National Association of Realtors said that uh middle-income buyers can afford to buy less than a quarter of listings on the market. And then the National Association of Home Builders said that around seventy-three percent of households cannot afford a home at the median home price. So this really is a challenge across the country and in Rexburg. Here's an example of a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. It's a fourplex, so you'd be able to afford one of the units. It's only eight hundred and fifteen square feet, two-bedroom, one bath. Here's another example, again, same price point, similar square footage. So again, someone making sixty thousand dollars, this is what they can afford in Rexburg. If you did find something that was closer to the median home price, right, so for Madison County, it's four hundred and eight thousand dollars, so this is pretty close, you could get something around sixteen hundred square feet. And then there's lots of people that, you know, kind of expect, I think, more, a little more before housing prices really skyrocketed. Here's a larger home, but right, that's five hundred thousand dollars. You're looking probably at someone to afford something like this, someone would have to make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus annually. So that's a real challenge. I bought a home just a little over a year ago here in Rexburg. And it was tough. It was really tough. You know, I I make um a reasonable salary here at the city, um but it was barely enough to be able to afford something. So my little two-bedroom, one-bath townhouse, it was really hard to find. But we made it work, right? Um, but it it's a real challenge for a lot of people, I think, my age, trying to get into the housing market. I had a lot of people tell me when I was trying to find a home, you know, it was so hard, and they said, well, just wait till interest rates go down. I'm like, okay, you know, I'm weighing that in my head. Should I just wait till interest rates go down? So in all this research for housing, I downloaded the Fed data. And if you look at over the past fifty years, you take all of those, you get the average for the fifty-year average interest rate is seven point seven four percent. So really, interest rates now, I mean, this is our historical average for the last fifty years. So we shouldn't really count on, you know, just encouraging people just to wait, you know, we're not gonna have two percent interest rates again. And um so again, how are we gonna help our children and grandchildren be homeowners, build equity? The National Association of Realtors, they are really good at tracking uh housing affordability, and they have some great data. I went through it. If you look at the historical thirty-five-year historical affordability average, you get a few scenarios. So let's say home prices were stable, right? Rents are not rents. Interest rates would have to fall to three point five five percent to get back to the historical affordability average. Then if prices grew by five percent instead of being stable, interest rates would have to fall to three point one six percent. If prices stayed the same here, but incomes increased five percent, which might be possible, you know, rates would still have to fall to three point nine five percent, all this below a four percent interest rate. Let's say a mortgage rate stays around eight percent. That means median home prices will have to fall by thirty-five percent down to two sixty-five. Um, and then the national average is around four fifteen, just to give you an idea. And then if rates stayed at eight percent and prices stayed the same, incomes would have to increase by sixty-three percent, which I don't see happening anytime soon. So this is this and all these scenarios really help point the picture of the kind of problem we're at right now, right? It's really hard for us to to kind of get back to the same housing affordability for the average American to buy a home. Um, we're making things worse in that nationwide, the small detached houses all but vanished. Only about eight percent of new single-family homes today are fourteen hundred square feet or less. If you go back to the nineteen forties, nearly seventy percent of new homes were that small. So here's an example. I love these um this documentation of what the starter home used to look like, but it's really non-existent today. So again, how are we gonna provide housing for our family, our friends, when home costs are the same as Southern California and Hawaii? Rexburg is part of the same nationwide trend where the size of houses have grown, while the average family size has shrunk. And this is really interesting, that only eleven percent of new homes in the United States have one or two bedrooms, but the average household is only one to two people. Then we look at um down payments, being able to help people afford a down payment for a home. Idaho is on the higher end for the time it takes to afford um a down payment. I crunched the numbers for Madison County. If someone was making enough money to save five hundred dollars extra a month and put it aside and save it for a down payment, in about thirteen years, um they'd have enough money for a down payment on a median-priced home. So it is a challenge. So again, how are we going to help someone build equity, right? That's kind of the tried and true American dream, is being a homeowner and being able to build equity. The National Association of Realtors have mentioned that middle-income buyers face the largest shortage of homes among all income groups, making it even harder for them to build wealth through homeownership. So a twofold approach is needed to help with both low affordability and limited housing supply. It's not just about increasing supply. We must boost the number of homes at the price way price range where most people can afford to buy. So that's an important part of this discussion is what do these homes look like, right? If we need to increase homes and homes that people can actually afford to buy, what does that kind of house look like? So I've been spent the better part, about a year now, understanding the housing problem and how Rexburg should move forward. And thankfully, I've come up with some ideas that I think can help start this conversation, so we can get started on it now before it gets too bad. I have a kind of a three-phase plan to combat the housing crisis in Rexburg. Um, and to understand that three-phase plan, we need to understand what missing middle housing is. Missing middle housing and understand the difference between density and scale, which is really important, and I think really insightful for all of us. So James Tischler, this is the quote we read earlier. He continues, "When drilled further, the research finds missing middle housing is the fastest-growing preference because it has the place quality talent seeks." Hence, development of missing middle is now recognized as a housing and economic development strategy. And that's why we've invited some of the planning and zoning uh members to come out tonight to also hear about this, because it's really something that we're talking about internally, both as a housing and economic development strategy. So missing middle housing is, I think, one of the most promising solutions for Rexburg. It's the housing types between the large detached single-family home and the large apartment complex building. It was a very traditional housing style um prior to the end of World War Two, but after World War Two, things kind of changed a little bit. But this is something that historically was used quite often across the country. And we talked a moment about um moment ago about equity, right, and building equity. And I thought it was really fascinating to learn that historically, missing middle housing were the housing types that provide both a high quality of life and the opportunity for people to build equity and move up the social ladder. So this was the tool that really created a lot of wealth for people across the country. Um, and I think, again, this is important as someone making seventy-five thousand dollars can't afford the average home in Rexburg. So if you look at this graph, this is really interesting. You can see that housing construction never really recovered after the two thousand eight crisis. I'm sure we all remember that. I I'm old enough to remember it. And uh you look at that bottom line, that teal-blue colored line at the bottom, that's the missing middle housing. And you can see it really tapered off and never really came back up, whereas some of the other housing types did recover somewhat. Bloomberg points out that in twenty-twenty-two alone, only two thousand duplexes were constructed constructed in the United States, which was just shocking. So Rexburg does have some duplexes. It's one of the missing middle housing types, but we just another example of missing middle housing that's not not being built across the country. Here's another graph that visualizes how missing middle housing is shrinking. You can see the number of units that are being constructed each year by building size. It's pretty fascinating to see. It's just continues to shrink. And there's a lot of reasons for this, but um I just wanna get into the characteristics of missing middle housing. So what are their characteristics? They're marketable. They create community, and they require simple building codes. So they're a little bit easier to build. Why is missing middle housing marketable? Well, it allows people of all ages to live in a community near amenities and not being restricted to just living in a large apartment building or condominium building. Buyers and renters of these housing types drafted and trading space, housing in yard-square footage for place or proximity to services and amenities. I've seen that in a lot of studies. That's the trend. That's what people are prioritizing now. And I think it's important to note that the largest generation of workers in America are millennials. You can see fifty-nine percent in that picture are looking for missing middle housing. And Gen Z is also becoming of age and flooding into the labor market, and they have similar views as well. And then for like our generation of baby boomers, um they're America's largest generation, right? They retired before during the pandemic, a lot of them. And many of them are gonna want to downsize, but as we touched on earlier, we're not building small homes anymore. And so missing middle housing really is gonna play a part for them as well, being able to downsize and afford something as prices have really increased since they last purchased a home. So while I introduced missing middle housing, I said, we need to understand the difference between density and scale. And this is something I'm really excited to talk about. I think it's gonna be key for us to really understand and embrace if we want to reintroduce missing middle housing in a Rexburg. And in making housing decisions, we often get caught up in a discussion of density, which isn't really necessarily wrong. It's important, but density can't be the only thing we'd consider, right? Often when people talk about density, they're often talking about this concept of scale. And so missing middle housing helps ensure this concept of scale. So what exactly are we talking about when we talk about scale? Scale can have kind of two options, house scale or block scale. So on the left, you have a building the scale of a house, and on the right, you have a building the scale of a block, right? And that really has an impact on a community. Many people that are worried about density are worried about block-scale buildings and what impact that might have on their neighborhood and their city. And so missing middle housing types have small to medium-sized footprints with a body width, depth, and height no larger than a single-family home, which makes them really nice. They really fit in with the character of a neighborhood um or a community. This concept of scale also creates lower perceived densities, even though densities um might actually be higher. So I'll show an example of that. Take a look at these two different scale buildings. So on the left, you have a block-scale building. It's really long, really tall, right, really big, has forty-nine units in that building. Then on the right, you have a house-scale building. There's five units in it. But if you look there at the bottom, the densities per acre are the same. Right? It's the same. It's the same density, but the scale is so different. And I think that's really, really neat. So due to the small footprint of missing middle housing types and the fact that they can be mixed in with a variety of other building types, even on an individual block level if you wanted, the perceived density of missing middle housing is usually quite low, right? So you could be driving down the street. There could be a missing middle housing-type building. Um, you drive by, you wouldn't even notice, right? Because it's house scale. Doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. And I think this is important because a lower perceived density for development in Rexburg, I think is gonna be key to preserving that small-town feel that like so many people talk about and want, right? They want Rexburg to still feel like a small town. We're gonna grow. There's not a lot we can do about that, right? We're getting um so much growth, but I think as we consider scale, and and not that block-scale buildings don't have their place. I think they do, but missing middle housing types is really a win-win, I think, for a lot of people with differing opinions. And so that's why I think it's a really exciting um concept. So keep this in mind, this idea of scale and how it can preserve um the traditional Rexburg feel. So here's a great project that was done in, um, I believe it was Nebraska. Um, it's a complete missing middle housing project. Fantastic, super appealing, right? It feels like a neighborhood. But look at these densities. Each of these numbers show the number of units in each building. So you have four, five, two, three, six, wide range. But if you were to drive down that neighborhood, walk down the sidewalk, right, it doesn't feel like you're in a project. It feels like you're in a neighborhood, right? So here's another example of that kind of more street view down, so overhead. It's really beautiful, really inviting, creates a sense of community, and that's so powerful. So there's a variety of missing middle housing types. Some of them Rexburg's familiar with, some of them they're not. I mean, some of them we don't have in our community, but just keep in mind that idea of house scales. We quickly go through some examples. So there's the twin home, um which Rexburg isn't completely um unfamiliar with. Here's some local examples, right, of the twin home. The twin home can definitely fit in with a neighborhood blend-in. Then you have the stacked duplex, where instead of the twin home, it's one unit over the other, instead of side-by-side. And these are great, too. They're also house scale. I'm just gonna keep going through them quickly so we can not take too long, but then there's the stacked fourplex. And and before I show some examples, um some of the architectural styles are a little older, but keep in mind the concept that these are house scale, right? It's very different from some of the other fourplexes that we have in Rexburg that aren't inviting, that don't create as much community. So here's a couple of examples. It's alongside a street. You drive by, you think that's just a normal home, right? And then you have a courtyard building, which is kind of like a U-shaped building that'll facing an inner courtyard, often along the street. You can see some examples here. Might still house scale, though. These might have six units in them, but it doesn't feel like block-scale building. Then you have cottage courts, which I think could be really powerful for Rexburg from the single young professional to the young married couple to the downsizing baby boomer. They're detached, single-family homes. They're fairly small, maybe a thousand square feet, eight hundred square feet, but they face a common area. And this creates a sense of community. One of my research I've done, a lot of people will come out, see their neighbors, they walk by their neighbors, they sit in a common area in the patio or the grass, and um really creates a sense of place, a sense of community. But we really don't have anything. I've driven around town, tried looking, asked around. We really don't have anything like this in Rexburg, which is really disappointing. Then we have the mansion apartment, which is really, really popular these days. You saw some examples from that project in Nebraska. These could have six, seven um units in them, and they just look like a lot. These could have six, seven units in them, and they just look like a large home, right? Just looks like a really large house. So, it feels like you're part of a community, right? So, for example, that middle one, the unit all the way to the left is a single unit with nothing above it, and then there's four units on the bottom level, and then a couple more above those. Then twin, or townhouses, which Rexburg is not unfamiliar with. And then, of course, the triplex stacked, which is really common back east. But house-scale missing middle housing is really going to allow us to preserve, again, that small-town feel that Rexburg wants, but it's also housing that we can build that people can actually afford to buy, which is powerful. And it creates a sense of place, right? It's something where talent wants to be, right? Rexburg's going to be more attractive. I love how planner, this planner, his name's Victor Dover, he points out that in these two examples, the density, lot size, and land use, they're all the same, but one's more inviting than the other, right? And that's what missing middle housing really provides, is that attractive place to live that talent really wants to, to come to. I think most people agree they'd rather live with that top example. All right. So, we reviewed missing middle housing and the concept of scale versus density. So, how do we move forward? I'm recommending a three-phase approach. First, phase one, it's education analysis, which is part of, part of tonight. And then, phase two is integration. And then, phase three, we establish some type of formal housing entity. So, phase one, again, is about education and analysis, mainly how do we plan for missing middle housing. In the past, our department, the planning and zoning department, has received a lot of training from firms like Opticos. They received them down in Utah several years ago. It'd be great to bring in a firm like Opticos to help better educate us about missing middle housing, bring some different stakeholders together and get that community buy-in, because missing middle housing could be so powerful. And then, bringing in, and then having someone like Opticos or another planning firm analyze the city's planning, planning and zoning documents to understand what barriers we might have in missing middle housing and implementing it. So, I know we reached out to Opticos just to pick their brain about missing middle housing, because we'd received training from them before, and they putting out some really great little things, like changing the driveway width and just that you wouldn't normally think about, but really could cause serious barriers for missing middle housing. And so, bringing in a firm, planning firm, to help us think that through would be really great. Phase two is about integration. Phase two has three parts. First, looking at implementing the concept of scale more into what we do internally with Planning and Zoning Commission, with our own planning documents, our own zoning, right? And that's something that we can do internally. Not saying that we have to get rid of density, but still considering that concept of, of scale. And then creating a part, some type of project, pilot project, to introduce missing middle housing to Rexburg. There's a lot of demand, I think, for missing middle housing, but a developer might be hesitant. You know, they might have a little bit of a hard time envisioning it in Rexburg because they've never done it. And so, we could provide the opportunity to show proof of concept and kind of understand how missing middle housing might fit best in Rexburg. And so, my recommendation would be to create a cottage court project and then some type of mansion apartment project, something small to start off with, but again, show proof of concept. And then, third, I think we should create some form of house-scale form-based code. So, I know many of you are familiar that we have form-based code in the downtown, but it's really designed more for block-scale buildings. And so, we could create some residential form-based code that encourages house-scale buildings, including missing middle housing types. And form-based code really takes in consideration the relationship between different buildings, sort of having these awkward relationships between different houses. Maybe you have a really large apartment building, and all of a sudden, you have a really small single-family home. It really takes that into consideration, the environment of the street. And so, I love this example. On the left, you have a conventional zoning, and on the right, you have form-based code. On the left is a really large apartment building, and on the right are some house-scale buildings. Why do we end up with this distinction, right? With form-based code is different because conventional zoning creates multifamily zones that typically allow for much bigger buildings, right? They're taller, they're wider than missing middle housing types. It also encourages lot aggregation. So, you can see between the two examples, those parcels are preserved, whereas on the left, the parcels were combined and a big apartment building was built. And so, you end up with these large suburban garden apartments under conventional zoning, and you have those awkward transitions. And so, conventional zoning often fails to regulate building size and the form and proportion to lot sizes. And so, we could have a lot better planning as a result if we tried some form-based code. There's a great example down in Utah. The Utah League of Cities and Towns found that where cities just tried to use density, they saw really large homes on really small lots. So, you end up with something like this in California, those tall skinnies, right, that really don't fit in with the normal neighborhood. But form-based code regulates the width, depth, and height, and still, you can still receive the same densities, right, as we've reviewed. And then, finally, phase three is about establishing some form of housing entity in Rexburg. This is done across the country, and they're really successful. There's a couple of different options. The first is the land trust model, where the housing entity owns the land and the homeowner owns the improvements, the building. Utah just set aside five million this past year to introduce this kind of concept into the state. Then you have over in Haley, Idaho, so not too far away. They're doing a program for locals that are buying homes that work in Blaine County. The city will provide the local housing trust a twenty percent of purchase price, zero-interest deferred loan. So, twenty percent of the purchase price is a deferred loan, zero interest that goes to help reduce the overall cost of the home. And then, when the home buyer sells, they don't, they don't really have to make any type of payments on, on that secondary loan until they sold the house. And then, there's usually like a deed restriction that allows the house to continue in the program, make sure it's not just sold for a ton of money. It provides affordable housing for more people. Another option, like, for example, in Utah, they have this first-time homeowners assistance program, similar to Haley, Idaho. They're providing zero-interest, no-payment loans of up to twenty thousand dollars for first-time homebuyers, but it's only for new construction, and there's no deed restriction. And then, another housing program in Utah is called the Rocky Mountain Housing Fund, and this one's great. Let's say there's a schoolteacher that lives in the community, they've been renting for a long time, and they need help buying a house. So, this organization provides that schoolteacher a down payment and then make perhaps a better interest rate if their credit score is a little lower. And then, the program works on a fifty-fifty percent equity split. So, when this schoolteacher maybe later sells their home, they keep fifty percent of the equity, still providing them the opportunity to build equity in a home instead of just renting. And then, the other fifty percent of the equity goes back into the program to provide the opportunity for even more people. So, as we end, I just want to remind us that businesses want talent, but talent wants place, right? So, that's really key. And we, as we think about planning and housing and creating jobs, what I want to avoid is something like this. So, this is not too far from my house. It's really just a parking lot, right? If you think about it, it's just a parking lot with apartments. There's not a lot of sense of community or place. Again, here's this example. This is something we want, right? Something that's house-scale, that could blend in with a neighborhood, whereas this wouldn't, right? It doesn't feel like a neighborhood. And what I want to avoid is in ten years, when people talk about the housing crisis, they're not asking which one, right? The two thousand eight financial crisis or the one that came out of the pandemic. I think it's really important that we think about this now so that we can address it, and it's not something that we look back and wish we had considered. And this, we want to make sure we can provide both housing and jobs for our family and our friends. So, that's, that's it for my presentation, and I appreciate you guys for listening.
Thank you, guys. Very good. (applause). I know we don't have a lot of time, but I know there was a question or two. So, Eric, did you have a question, or did you get it answered through the presentation?
Well, yeah, sort of. I mean, it would take a lot more than what time we've got tonight.
Yeah.
To address that question. But you paint a pretty bleak picture for, for young families.
Yeah. I mean, it was, it was tough, like, just, I have, I'm married, I have a little, she's almost a year old. We bought the house right before she was born, and, and it was hard being able to find a home in Rexburg, which is sad because I love Rexburg, right? My grandparents, I spent summers here growing up, I went to school here, and I love my job so much. But when it came to like, oh, let's buy a house, right, it was tough. But there are solutions, and that's really what I want to talk about, is get this discussion started today, right? Because there are solutions, there are things we can do for, for our children and our grandchildren.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead.
Are we going to be discussing this at a later date?
Oh, yes.
I have a lot of questions, like, are you talking about public housing here? I, I just, I'm, I have so many questions.
Yeah. I'm not really talking about like subsidized housing. You know, subsidized housing has its place for sure, but missing middle housing isn't subsidized housing.
Yeah. I just, I couldn't understand some of the things you were saying, so I was hoping for more clarification.
Yeah. Definitely happy to sit down and, and go over that individually, or we can have another chance.
I think we probably will need to schedule probably an hour work meeting with Planning and Zoning to talk about this in more detail and be able to answer more questions, because I'm sure a lot of you have questions and discussions you'd like to, to visit about, too. So, so this was just really kind of an introductory lesson, I guess we'd say.
Yeah. It's a lot of information.
Yeah. It's a lot of information. Aaron's been working hard on it for a long time, trying to pull this all together, and we appreciate that, that effort. And I think we'll look at another time that we can schedule a work meeting to talk more about it in detail, so. Okay. Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Now, without any further ado, we'll, we'll jump into our regular meeting. So, I apologize, I didn't have time to ask you beforehand, but Councilmember Erickson, would you offer us an opening prayer? And Councilmember Chambers lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be assembled here this, this evening, thankful for the opportunity that we have to exercise our, our rights as citizens of this great country. We pray that as we are assembled, we'll be able to discuss the affairs of the, of the City of Rexburg in a civil and effective manner, and that we'll be able to come up with solutions which will address the needs that, that we see here to better our, our lives and, and those of our families. Thankful once again for the blessing it is to be able to assemble together for the freedoms and liberties that we enjoy. In this, we pray in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand, join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. Let's jump right in here. This is our city council meeting for March sixth of two thousand twenty-four. And Marianne, would you please go ahead with the roll call of council members?
Yes. Councilmember Dotson.
Here.
Councilmember Tevers.
Here.
Councilmember V. Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember V. Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Reeser.
Councilmember Reeser, I think, is on a school trip, I believe, so.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Okay. Is that everyone? Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate that. All right. We'll move forward. We'll skip over the night, number three, since we just did it, and we'll move to item number four on our agenda, which is Police Department Promotions Presentation. We'll turn, turn the time over to our police chief to take care of that. Chief Rhodes.
Is it okay over here?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. No, we, we appreciate this opportunity to introduce our new leadership and promotions to the council. We've been here a lot lately. These are the, the last promotions I think we're going to have for a while, we hope. And so, one of the most difficult things about promotions in our department is, is we have so many great officers, we have great leadership within the department throughout the ranks, and that makes it difficult as we promote people in, in the department. But as we've transitioned with some of the retirements and filling other positions, we've recently filled our patrol corporal position due to some of the other movement. And so, if I could have Doug Jones step up here with me. So, Doug Jones has actually only been with the Police Department for three years. He started with us in January in two thousand twenty-one. Doug's been a, a great leader in the department. He's stepped up and, and gone above and beyond on, on many different areas. He's just completing or starting to become an FTO. It's a field training officer that trains all of our new officers. And then, he is a dare instructor, and he's jumped right in, into the leadership, and so he's, he's our new patrol corporal. And so, if I could just introduce him to you guys, and then we give him a round of applause. (applause). Appreciation, so.
Congratulations.
So, with, with the movement, we've had an opening in our detective sergeant position. So, if I could have Chuck Kunsitis come up. So, Sergeant Kunsitis has been with the Rexburg Police Department since two thousand one. He's been a detective for thirteen years, and the list of accomplishments and certificates might take too long to go over tonight, but some of the, the main highlights, he, he's a DRE instructor, that's a drug recognition expert. He's a newly appointed evidence technician. The list goes on and on. He was a patrol sergeant. He's, he's done a lot for building the culture that we have at the Rexburg Police Department, and we appreciate his leadership and, and the example that he is to our department and to all of our new guys. And so, he, he's going to do a great job, and already is doing a great job as our new detective sergeant. So, we, we appreciate him and look forward to his leadership. And so, if we could give Detective Sergeant Kunsitis a, a round of applause as well. (applause). We are, we started our testing process today for two new hires for patrol, and so, probably next council will be back again, hopefully introducing two new officers, so.
Okay.
Appreciate you letting us be a part of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that, and congratulations, Detective Kunsitis, Detective Sergeant, right? Kunsitis. All right. Thank you very much. I just got a text message from Councilmember Reeser. He is actually watching, but he says he can't, can't hear anything, so I don't know if there's any tweaks we can do on that to help him have some audio. Otherwise, he'll just have to look at all of our pretty faces and wonder what's going on, I guess, but if there's anything we can do. But we'll go ahead and move on and let you work on that while we're, while we're moving on with our agenda here. Okay. And number five would be to, oh, and thanks, thanks all of you, officers, for being here. We appreciate you being here to support your fellow officers and appreciate all of you that, all that you do. So, thanks so much for being here. Item number, oh, you're good. Okay. All right. Item number five is just to welcome another one of our new employees. This is Parker Anderson in our Recreation Department. Parker, there you are, right there. Come on up, if you would, and just tell us, tell us a little bit about you and your family or whatever you'd like us to know, you know?
Yeah, all right. So, my name is Parker Anderson, and we just moved back. I grew up in Rexburg for a few years. I know a few, a few people in the stand here. We were just, we moved back from Colorado, so I was working at a YMCA there doing recreation. So, I'm excited to, to be back in the area and to, to, to work with John here, to do some races and, and work at the Winter Park. So, it's, it's really good to be here, so.
Okay. Now, that's what I was thinking. You're, you're the races manager, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because on, on my thing here, it says Rexburg Rapids Manager, but I, I thought that was, that was.
I'm the other guy.
That's what I thought, yeah. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I had that straight. You're the other guy. All right. Well, thanks for being the other guy. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let's give Parker a round of applause. (applause). So, yeah, just, just, I mean, I, I don't know if how many of you have an agenda, but we're So, yeah, just, I mean, I don't know if how many of you have an agenda, but we're going to move on through this stuff, and you're welcome to stay, but you don't need to feel guilty about leaving if there's someplace else you need to be. So thank you for being here, all of you. Our staff reports are next. Item number seven, and the first will be the finance report with our CFO, Mr. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, I missed number six. Number six, we don't want to miss that. We've got special guests here that I know want to get up. So this is a time for any items that are not on the agenda, and we ask you to come to the podium here, state your name and address, and go ahead and tell us anything you'd like us to know. Come on up.
Hello, good afternoon, city mayor and council members. I'm Melanie Averitt, and my address is 4980 West 4,000 North, just out of Plano.
Did you just repeat your name and address with that on? Sorry.
Melanie Averitt from Plano, Idaho. My address is 4980 West 4,000 North.
Okay, thank you.
And I love Rexburg. I volunteer. I'm here on behalf of the Rexburg Free Clinic. You guys should all have gotten your invitations for our upcoming gala. It has good information in there about the clinic, and also, I mean, we would like to invite all of you guys to come if you're available. I support the clinic. I love to volunteer, especially for causes in my own backyard. Because, I mean, everyone can volunteer in the country, but I think that you get the most done when you volunteer in your own backyard. So that's why I support the clinic. There will be refreshments, appetizers, dancing. So I hope that you guys will make an attempt to support your local free clinic because it does do a good difference. I've heard many stories from people throughout the community, not only in Rexburg, but from Idaho Falls, Blackfoot, people who have come to utilize our services here in Rexburg. I'm a first, I don't know exactly how to say this, but my father immigrated from Mexico. He received his naturalization in the 80s. I remember going to that. But healthcare is huge, just like housing and police. Healthcare is huge in the community. So I invite you all to come. You guys all have a complimentary, one free entrance for you and a guest, and we'll have a silent auction there as well. So thank you for your time. I appreciate everything that you guys do for our community, and I hope to see you guys there.
Well, thank you for the invitation. We appreciate that. And I will comment that I think I've been to the previous two galas, and they were really nice events and fun, and I think for a good cause. So I would encourage everyone to go if you're, if it's possible for you to go that evening. It's a really good event.
It's amazing. And we hope, and we do try to work with the college quite a bit. We have a wonderful senior student who is doing this for her senior capstone project. She's donating all of her time, and this is what she's doing for her college senior project, and it's been really awesome.
Great. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you being here. All right, is there any other public comments to come before us this night? Yes?
My name is Vince Haley, 2309 West 960 South here in Rexburg. I think sometimes being in your position, you get a lot of complaints, but I'm here to give you a thumbs up. On the local improvement districts, we saw right through here in town last year, from an outsider's perspective, having no involvement in that, my thoughts are they went well, they were planned well, and the end result was well done, as compared to other previous LIDs we've seen done in the city. So I wanted to give a shout out to Keith and his team, as well as to the city, to make those happen, because I'm sure those were not easy ones to happen. Also wanted to point out, I've been here in the past, I know we've been redoing the parks signage around the parks, but also wanted to point out that the signs indicating like the museums and those kinds of things down Main Street could be replaced or given some love and made more visible during the day. I think the exciting thing of the new parks coming is great. I also would like to see that we maintain and keep care, especially of that Main Street stuff, as we come past Maverick. The grass on either side, the last couple of years have been a little rough in maintenance, and I understand this next year is not going to be any easier to maintain. Maybe in the coming years, we look at maintaining.
The traffic might be a little slower, so that might help. I don't know.
I just think as people enter our town, as they come into that new exit, we have an opportunity to invite them to flowers and green grass that's been maintained. And when it looks good, it's very inviting. When it's not looking good, it's not as inviting to our city. So, thank you.
No, I actually appreciate you mentioning that, Vince, because I've kind of thought that too, but I didn't want to seem too critical. So to hear it from, to hear my thoughts verified from someone else actually gives me a little bit of validation. So we'll definitely work on that. Thank you.
Mayor, just a.
And thank you for the thumbs up too, for the other things. That's great.
Mayor, just a quick question. Are you suggesting the possibility of having plantings on the north side, on the golf course side, just as there is on the south side? No, I'm not suggesting anything more, just that it be maintained to what it could be or should be.
Yeah, it's been a little rough sometimes with the dandelions and different things.
When it was first installed, two or three, maybe four years ago, it looked awesome. And it was very inviting. As it has not been as maintained as it could have been, it's less inviting.
I agree. Okay.
I think that fence is broken there.
The what?
Has anyone noticed the fence is broken out there?
On Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And actually, we're working on those signs too. We're working on getting those replaced kind of a little at a time so that it's not, you know, budget breaker. But, but yeah, we're working on those too. And I've also, I've bugged the, I don't know if this bugs any of you. It bugs my wife every time we drive by, but the population sign coming into town from that direction hasn't been updated, and a lot of the others have. It still says 29,000. Every time we drive by that, she goes, why don't you get that updated? And I go, trying to figure out who's supposed to do that, and nobody seems to know, although they changed the ones out on the freeway. So I think it's ITD, and I've asked them a couple of times, and they keep telling me they'll find out and get it done. So we'll see. So anyway, all right, is there any other comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jester, 160 West 5th South. Students have moved all the time. I also would like to give a thumbs up. I'm an international student. I've only been here for two years, and I'm very proud to call Rexburg my home. I love this place, it's given me a lot of support. I feel like I've been here more than just my education. I've actually taken a class with Rihanna before, and she's great.
That's awesome.
So I'm training now to get my suicide prevention. So I'll teach, start teaching around the area suicide prevention. And I actually came here because I'm representative from a nonprofit called Voice Advocacy, and I've been working alongside with this recovery center in Center of Hope. So we have a very exciting opportunity coming up. So Center of Hope is like a nonprofit, is like a recovery center, and they're building a satellite office here in Rexburg. And we have an event coming up on the March 19th. It'll be, it'll be a community conversation. We focus on topics like more enforcement, behavioral health, resources for children and families, and recovery coaches and support meetings. So we shot to the Family Crisis Center, and the Family Crisis Center will be one of the main key speakers starting this conversation. We shot to other nonprofits in the area like Upper Valley Child Advocacy, other nonprofits around Idaho Falls and the Rexburg Police Department as well. We'll hopefully invite like the mayor and the council members and whoever is here really to come and be part of this conversation, be part of this dialogue, so we can create more safe spaces and more safe dialogues with the community members here, with the students here on campus. Because there's like, I know Rexburg is America's family community, but that sometimes it's drop problems, and there's not a lot of safe spaces for people to go to. So this new recovery center, this satellite office opened here in Rexburg, will be really good for the community, and we greatly appreciate it if members of the council can come, as you guys have already done such a great job. And this will be continuing making this place a little more beautiful place. Thank you. I brought flyers. Just to let you know, it's like, whoever wants to take it, you can come. It's a free event. It's open to all, so I invite you guys to come. If you guys want to come, you guys can speak, you guys don't have to speak. But it'll be refreshment, it'll be food, and we have fun time. So I hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will say, I think I wasn't able to attend that same event last year, but I went the year before, and there was some good conversation and some good things talked about. So that's a good event, too. So thank you. Appreciate that invitation. All right, is there any other comments at this point in time? Anyone? Sally, are you coming up to make a comment? Are you just leaving?
Mine.
All right, see ya. Thanks for being here. Thank you all of you for being here. We appreciate your time here. All right, we'll move on to item number seven now with our finance report with Mr. Matt Nielsen, our CFO.
All right. Good evening. I had a quick question. We are wrapping up our fiscal year 23. We were going to do it in two weeks. The auditors asked if we could push it back to the first council next month. And so typically, we will do like a work meeting. Generally, we do it at noon, and it's an opportunity to come in with the finance staff and the auditors and go through that audit. It's, it is pretty informative. We kind of dive a little deeper into the finances and whatnot. And so my question is.
Why don't you open the door, please?
My question is, do you guys want to try and schedule that on Friday, March 29th or April 1st? What works best? And then is there, is noon a good time? Or is there, I mean, we can do the afternoon. The auditor said they're open to what works, so.
See, see that?
So Friday, Friday, March 29th or April 1st?
29th is best for me.
Oh. Yeah, me too. I'll be gone April 1st.
I'll be gone Friday, the 29th. It's Easter's weekend. But about Thursday.
I'll be teaching then, but I'm fine missing it if there's enough of us available to go. Without me.
I can make either day.
Either day? Okay.
What time of the day would it be and how long would the meeting last?
You know, we can do it whenever. Like, we could do it Friday morning. We could do it Friday at.
Want to do it early Friday morning? Like, fairly early meetings?
If you could do that, I could probably make it.
Okay. If we did, like Friday at 9:00, would that be?
9:00 or 8:30?
Do you want to go 8:30?
Let's do 8:30.
Okay.
Make Rihanna get up early. Rihanna, sorry.
Okay, I'll get that scheduled.
The 29th, right?
Yeah, the 29th.
29th, yep. All right, thank you.
Will you send an invite out?
8:30. Yeah, I will. Okay, sorry. Okay, so I've got a few things to go through. The first one is just on the budget calendar. I'm not going to go through it. Hopefully, you saw the updated budget calendar, but we're going to go through a few of the points, and then we probably just want to, I just kind of want your thumbs up or, or yeah, let's move forward with that schedule so that we can get some things going. The first one that I want to talk about, though, is I want to make sure that we're good with the July 17th at 6:30 PM for the public hearing, because we have to let the county clerk know that pretty soon. Any reason to change that? Are we good to move forward?
We're okay, aren't we? So good, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's pull the colo one up, Deb, if you don't mind. So last time we met, or last time that I met with you, we didn't have these numbers in yet, but let me show you the cost of living proposal for fiscal year 25. So that would start October 1st. But we, what we do is we can, we look at the Consumer Price Index. We look at the west region, and when you think of the west, it really is the west. I mean, it's California, Idaho, Utah, Wyoming, Arizona, Oregon, Washington, Alaska. So it's really those states that surround us. So the, after we got the index from January to January, it came back at a 3.33% recommendation for the cost of living. And so the average over the last 10 years has been about 2.86. And so it's still a little bit above the average, but you can see it's a lot less than the two prior years in '23 and '24. And so, and then, just to give you an idea, you know, what kind of a budget impact that has, you know, that will probably cost right around $876,000 to adopt that. And the general fund is about $431,000. So gives you some dollars that kind of go with that. So, and we can, we can, really, what I need to know is if you're comfortable with me budgeting with that cost of living adjustment, because I have to know that as I go through that payroll budget process. And so I'm going to keep going through the items and then, or if you guys want to address them individually, whatever works. Percy, we will also have some changes. That will be July 1st, and so I just want you to be aware of that, and that will be both on the employer and the employee side. And then the, the health side of things, what we would like to do is budget the 12% increase for health, which is the maximum that it would be, because we do have a contract for our second year that says it can't go higher than that 12%. So, and then the other thing that I want to make sure is, are you guys still good with Wednesday, April 10th from 9:00 to 3:00? So pretty much an all-day meeting for the council drive around.
I am. I hope we are, because we argued over that for two hours.
Yeah, it changed a few times.
Hey, Matt? And if everybody will just give me the items they want to go see, we need to visit, and we can get, we can get a schedule put together.
Okay.
You just email me or text me. We can go there.
Yeah. Those things are all kind of similar as far as the budget process. So I think we could probably do an action item to approve all 1 through 5 items, 1 through 5 this time, and then we'll do number 6 as a separate item.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question for Matt. How long's it been since Percy has increased?
Well, actually, last year was a strange year. They actually reduced the general one last year, and they're actually taking it almost back up to the same thing. I don't even know why they reduced it, but, but I think the reason why they did it, they created a new class for school teachers, because what they found out is that the general class and the public safety class were actually subsidizing the school teachers in the system. And so they created a new class that was higher. And, but a year later, they're going to basically take it back to the same. And then the increase for public safety, I think I put it in the packet, right? The Percy one?
Yeah.
Or you guys have it? Okay, great. That's a little more substantial, I would say. And of course, that one's always been a little higher than the general one, because they base it on the rule of 80 instead of the rule of 90. So.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you remind me when the work meeting is? Or is that, are we going to go over that?
Yeah, go ahead and do that one.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So you're talking these ones? Or the, like the department work meetings?
No.
Oh, you're talking the, I know what you're talking about.
About your work meeting.
Yeah, so we were looking at June 5th, and we decided to do 4 o'clock instead of 5 o'clock. So it gives us an extra hour.
Yeah, so we have time to ask questions. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve items 1 through 5 on the agenda here as stated, as shown.
I will make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll cycle it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further questions or discussion?
I have just a question.
Okay.
Since I'm new and have no clue.
Yeah, you're good.
I mean, we're approving on the, on the cost side. How do we match that up with the?
So, the revenue side?
Where does the revenue come from to take care of all these increases?
That's a great question. So primarily, you know, property tax is one of those big areas, so we're allowed to do a 3% increase, and that is to help with that. Of course, 3%, it's not going to cover the full 3.33%. And then the other thing is, is generally, we will usually normally see an increase in sales tax as well, but that's not always the case. And so as we go through the budgeting process, really, once we get through the department meetings, then I kind of have those forecast estimates. Because a lot of those numbers are dictated by the state's forecast. And then I plug it in, and almost always, there's a shortage. And so we end up having to go through and prioritizing and cutting some things out and then determining, you know, what stays, what doesn't. And so you guys aren't really, you're not really officially adopting it tonight. You'll do that through the budget process. But it allows me to put it in so that you can see what effect it has.
For example, the healthcare only comes in a 6% increase, and there's suggestions that can be made and-
Yeah, and, but generally, what we will do on that is we'll generally budget it at the 12. And then when we get to the next year, because we won't know that until probably November of the next year. And a lot of times, we'll do a budget adjustment, and we'll take it back out of the budgets, and we'll put it back into contingency. And then the other thing that is important to note is, especially with the general fund, you know, we do rely on fund carryover, fund balance carryover, to balance that budget. I mean, we've done that for years. We do have a policy that we try to maintain a certain reserve. And, you know, we've done pretty well on that. Our minimum's 25%. And, you know, we've been, we try to do 25 to 33%, and we've been above that 33% for several years in a row. But it is dropping. I mean, it will drop next year. You'll see that from where it was.
Yeah. Yeah, and this motion actually basically just sets calendar items, you know, rather than any kind of budget actions or anything. So it's just basically calendaring. So is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes for those items, and we'll move on to item number 6, which is a budget adjustment for the romance theater front doors.
So this is a project that, we've actually had it in the budget, I think it was actually two years ago. But we, but we didn't budget enough at the time. But we applied for a grant a couple of years ago. We got it from the Idaho Humanities Council. It was for $8,000. You know, back when we got it, we were hopeful that it would cover 50% of the cost. But we finally got a bid. It took us a while to get the contractor. It came in at $36,000. And so what we did, though, is we reprioritized. We kind of looked at the other capital projects that would be occurring this year, and several of them really aren't going to happen this year, so they would slide back to next year. And I'm not going to go through every one, but if you've got questions, I can certainly talk about it. And then there's also a big project, the lighting project. What that was is we had $100,000 in the budget, but we applied for a $90,000 grant, and we didn't get it. And so we're taking that out as well. So we are not asking for contingency here. We're just basically saying, do you want to move forward and do this project for $36,000 and get the $8,000 grant to go against that cost? If not, then we don't do the project. And so we just kind of need to know that right now because we have availability of the contractor, and we have to spend that grant money by, I think it was December or possibly October of this year.
Okay. Any comments on that or questions?
Matt, so everybody understands what we're doing over there. Could you just describe-
Pull your mic down.
Just describe what we're doing on that front door?
Yeah, yeah, so I should have had a picture of it. But where the wood is on the west side, the idea is to kind of match that look, but where the main door is to the east, kind of under the, what do we call that thing then?
Marquee.
Marquee, thank you. And so the idea is that, I can't remember, Jed's not here, I can't remember if it pulls it out a little under the marquee. I know that was one thought. Do you remember, Keith? Or is it just straight?
Straight.
Okay. Yeah, we talked several options, and so this would just be straight. So it just kind of matches that look.
Are those doors ever used?
Oh, oh, yeah.
The west side?
No, we're talking the front, sorry. We're just talking the-
No, but I mean, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but isn't there a set of doors on the east side facing north, and another set of doors on the west side facing north?
There is one little door. And no, I don't think they really use that door. Do you get, I don't know-
Not much. It's usually locked.
But that's not what we're talking about.
No, we're talking about the main doors.
Yeah.
But matching that look of the, just to the right of it, so. And we would have to send this to the State Historical Society, and they kind of, they have to give us the thumbs up for it.
Okay, any further questions?
And it's all just for looks, right? There's nothing functional. It's just for-
I would guess that there'd probably be a little more energy-efficient doors when they were there newer and, I mean-
I mean, there's potentially that, yes. I know that, as, I know that I think we would come in and upgrade the badge system. It's got some issues, not just on the front doors, but also on the side doors. But we thought it'd be best to work through this project and get those in place, and then we can address all the doors, so.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any further discussion or questions? If none, I would entertain a motion to do this budget adjustment for the romance theater front doors. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I shall move.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Erickson, the one down there. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. We will go ahead and move forward with that. Right, anything further? No? Okay. All right, item number B1 is our Public Works. We have a contract approval for Horox to design the new traffic signal at 7th South and Center Street. And most of the funding for this, I think, Kevin's, is from LTAC.
Yeah, so if you recall, we got that, received a grant from LTAC to put in a traffic signal there at Center Street and 7th South. And this is entering into a contract with Horox to do the design work on that traffic signal.
Okay, any questions about that from anyone? Yes?
Center Street up there is, which one is that?
Where the ball fields all.
By the Ball Diamonds? Or by the, yeah, the Ball Diamonds?
Yeah, the Ball Diamonds.
Okay.
And this is the spot where that young man unfortunately was hit by a car and died last year? Was that two years ago? Maybe two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah, and so we were looking at just putting a hock light in there, but LTAC gave us enough money that we could just look at doing a full signal there, so it'll be safer. There's a lot of traffic back and forth across that spot. All right, so entertain a motion to approve this contract.
I'll also move.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Chambers. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Move on to item number 2, which is a bid approval and budget adjustment for concrete water reservoir rehabilitation.
I'll just bring it up. So we went out to bid. We've got our two concrete reservoirs that are in need of work, rehabilitation on them. Sections of the concrete are failing, and they need to be fixed. And so we went out, and we only had one bidder on it, DN Tanks, but they do this work all over the place. And so we're recommending that we award to DN Tanks on that. Now, it is higher than we originally had estimated. We had got a different concrete company to look at it, and they gave us an estimate. They thought it was around $250,000. Obviously, it's significantly more than that with those tanks. But we feel like it's definitely needed.
I think it would be good to explain what you explained to me on why the bid was three times as much as what he thought originally.
What he thought originally. So we had talked with, so the same company that did the concrete out in front, we talked with them and asked them, say, hey, what would it take? And so he gave us an estimated price, but then we got with Keller Engineering, so they're the ones that did our reservoir out at Burton, did the design work on that. And we got with them to find out exactly, because these are post-tension concrete tanks to make sure we're getting the right work done on it. Because a lot of it, you want to make sure, especially when you're chipping off the loose concrete areas, to make sure they're not getting into where we have that post-tension steel. Because that would cause a lot of problems if you got into that. And so getting with them, these are some of the pictures of our tanks. You can see kind of the failures that are occurring. A lot of times are on the edges where you have the drip lines where the water runs off. And so getting with them and then getting the spec in place for the fixes for these tanks, we ended up putting that out to bid. We didn't have the concrete, the one that we got the original estimate from. We gave him a copy of the specs and everything, and he declined to bid on the project with that. And so we just had DN Tanks bid on that project.
So that tells us that he really, he realized that the estimate he gave us was not even close, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And Keith, going back to that picture where it showed kind of the scaling, or, yeah, is that so, like, that right there where those cracks are, is that something that has to be chipped off, or can they just coat over that something like that?
So primarily, we're just looking at the cap on it, the walls areas. They didn't feel like those needed. That's the area where we're looking at those bid alternates to apply that architectural coating on it.
Okay.
And so those areas, I mean, I'll, so primarily, it's the roof cap that we're the most concerned with, and that's where we're seeing the biggest deterioration happening on there. And so that's what those original numbers are for, is to cap that, they'll coat it, and they'll look with that architectural coating over the top of it. If we go back to the, some of the architectural-
These tanks are how old?
So the one up on the hill is probably approaching 50 years old. So that's the reservoir by, up by our water tower.
Yeah, and this is really the only major renovation or major maintenance thing we've had to do on it in all that time, right?
Yep.
So it's just-
So it's on three tanks?
Two tanks.
Two tanks, so which-
So we have the one up on the hill by our water tower. And then the second one is the one that's there on 7th North.
On 7th North.
Go right by, is it Commercial Tire?
Yeah, 7th North and Commercial Tire. So that's fairly new, and that's in the last-
Yeah, that's a newer tank, and we did have some issues with that with the, so it did have a brick coating around it, and that all started falling off. And we're seeing the deterioration on the top of that tank as well with the concrete. And so we're wanting to come in and just get them both fixed. We did ask them if, because we knew it was higher, right, and we're going to need to do a budget adjustment. We did ask them and say, well, what if we split it, and we did one tank now and one tank later? And they said it'd be about a $20,000 increase plus 5% on the actual bid. So we feel like it's, it would be beneficial just to do the budget adjustment and do it, get it all done now.
Yeah, because they, because they're, they actually have to travel quite a ways to get here, so that's probably what the extra $20,000 before.
Yeah, the remobilization.
How old's the tank on 7th North? Is it 10 years or?
No, that, the tank on 7th North, didn't look at that one, but it's, it was before I got here, so over 22 years. So I'm guessing probably 30?
About 30 years, yeah. This, the one up on the hill probably is going to take a little more than that one, but they both need it.
I think that must be less than 30, because I was here when it was being built, so.
Was it 98?
Yeah.
Okay, so then you're looking at 25.
26, 25.
If it's not, nothing's been working, okay.
Yeah.
So, okay. Okay, well, thank you. Is there any further questions or comments before we entertain a motion?
That previous drawing you had on the screen, is that what the finished product would look like?
Yeah, so if we go, we can show you kind of the, so here's before and after pictures with that architectural coating on it. So you can, you can add different colors if you want into it.
Do you have the white one?
Yeah, if we go right there.
That's kind of what we were thinking, was doing something like that. What are your thoughts? Do you prefer a darker color, or do you choose to stay with the white and have it kind of look nice and clean? That's kind of what we were thinking.
Looks good.
Good, all right, go with that. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve this bid.
Question first.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
In your, in your budget adjustment request, there are three items that it's, that it says here that will have to be added to the above budget?
Yeah, so the total-
I don't understand that.
So the total base bid, right, is $773,200, right? And then we had those bid alternates, so 4 and 5. One was for $38,300, the other was $37,300. So we would recommend including those two bid alternates with that $773, and then Matt would do the budget adjustment for that. He originally just put the budget adjustment in for the base bid amount.
Well, let me, let me help explain that. So you already have $250 in the budget.
Right.
So then you add the $523,200.
Right.
And then I didn't know what bid alternates we were going to do, and so you would have to motion to accept the $523,200 plus the change order 4 and 5, if that's what's being recommended.
Yeah.
And then I'll have to add the $38,000 and the $37,000 to the total budget adjustment.
And the other option we have, too, is to go with, like, number 3 is to go with the stucco, but that's about twice as much. And we didn't feel like the stucco would really be, in fact, personally, I think it would probably be worse than the architectural coating, because, you know, sometimes stucco falls off, too, so. But anyway, so we opted to go with the architectural coating rather than the stucco. So, yeah, we need to, we need to, the motion needs to include the budget adjustment of, and actually, you've, oh, you have in there, the operating reserve has 6.78 million in it, so we've got the cash to be able to do it. We just, we want to save the $20,000 by not having them come back again to do them separately, so. So we need the motion to include the $523,200 budget adjustment plus the items 4 and 5 on there as well. So I would entertain a motion as such at this time.
I can make that motion, that we prove the budget increase of $523,200 plus options 4 and 5.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Erickson, Eric Erickson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the motion passes. We will get to busy on that as soon as the weather allows. Hey, any further questions or comments for Keith?
I got a question. You were, I guess you did, too, huh?
Yeah, go ahead.
They, I thought, we discussed that signal there at McDonald's on University and Yellowstone, that the north-south sensors don't work. I was out there, I came back from Nautica Falls Airport last night at midnight. I sat there for three minutes. I was the only car there, and it never did change.
So you said north, so did you come up from-
From Thornton.
Nexus?
From Thornton Nexus. So I came up from Thornton.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because that, normally, I would think of coming in on the-
Right, yeah.
The other one, so you came up from Thornton, and then just straight through?
Mm-hmm.
And didn't pick it up, and you said-
I was the only car there, and I was there, cycled all the way through.
Didn't, didn't we set that to recognize criminal faces? That won't, that's why you're sitting, so. Just kidding, just kidding.
Maybe it's just getting at me because it was cold, and I was getting back from my vacation.
Yeah, yeah. No, well-
Because you know what, if we, when we start having this interchange out here shut down, we're going to move traffic a lot better right there than what we are, I think.
You were coming from the south?
Yes.
And you said you were midnight?
Midnight.
Okay, so that way you can look at the timing as well.
Yeah. That's all the time I hear. I get phone calls every other day on it.
Hmm, that's weird. I mean, I don't come from the south that much.
Hours, or is it outside when you hear about it from people?
What's that?
Is it during, I would say, normal hours?
Yes.
That they're experiencing, it doesn't change? Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I've, I've gone through there a lot, because if I go go to like my Qantas meeting at the hotel down there, I come back that way and it's fine.
If there's a lot of traffic, you don't notice it, when there's the only one, you own the car.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, no, we'll take a look at that.
You're sitting there looking both ways, okay.
I thought about running it.
Okay, anything else for Keith?
Keith, I do have one question on the LID up on the hill. I just wanna make sure that the neighbors up there, how, that we've contacted each house.
So, so we sent out letters?
Yes.
Yeah, so we sent out letters and then we also had a meeting up there, uh, for the neighborhood, so.
So how'd it go, yes?
Uh, it went long, but I thought it, it was good. Um, I mean, there was definitely, people had some different questions, but I think everything went well overall with that meeting.
So do you feel like we really made an extra effort to contact?
I think, I think so.
I wanna make sure we, we involve everybody up there, not, and miss a few and have them come back.
Well, we didn't involve the whole neighborhood, just the people on that street.
Just that street.
So I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, just that street.
Just that street, yes.
Did you have people opting in?
Uh, I know there were some people that, that were talking about it, I don't know if they've officially signed and opted in, but I know there was, I think, a couple, there might be like two that might opt in, that, at least that was my understanding.
What was their deadline to opt in?
Um, I can't remember what date we gave them, it was, it was Mar- early March, so it was, it was fairly quick on it, so. I can, I can find out and let you know on that.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank you for doing that, I just wanna make sure that, because to let them know and get that information to them, so thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you, anything else? Okay, thanks Keith, appreciate that. All right, item number eight, uh, eight A is mayor's business and, uh, we have a proclamation, but just before that, I am gonna mention that, uh, just a couple of events we've got coming up. We have our Heritage Youth Concert, which is our very first, uh, youth orchestra concert from our youth orchestra here in town. That's gonna be on March the 20th at 7:30 at the Tabernacle, so that would be a great thing to attend. And then, of course, the My Fair Lady Play going on this weekend and next weekend. Uh, get tickets for that, cuz I'm sure that'll be a very good event too, so. Um, at this point in time, I would like to recognize Ms. Liza Leonard who is here from the INL, right? And we have a proclamation that, uh, in support of or for the Advanced Energy Program there at the INL. Is, is, do you have any comments that you'd like to make about this before we jump into the proclamation? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna, um, say thank you this month.
I don't think it is. Tricky little button there. Oh, there we go.
Uh, just wanted to say thank you for, um, taking the time to make this proclamation. Uh, the Idaho National Laboratory is in the year celebrating its 75th anniversary and so on behalf, behalf of the INL and also of the new Idaho Advanced Energy Consortium that is trying to bring together, uh, those in the industry of advanced energy, those who will help our future workforce in this area and help support the, the growth of this, uh, in our entire region. Uh, we just really appreciate that, that you would recognize, um, how important that is to our region and to your community, so thank you for taking the time.
You bet, we're happy to. And, uh, also thank you for, uh, I don't know if it was you or someone on your teams organizing the, uh, the tour that's coming up.
Yes.
I think we've had a couple people sign up for that, which, uh, is exciting, it's always fun to see what's going on out there.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for, for also planning that. Uh, it's worth mentioning, you know, that, that we do offer tours to the community to come to the facilities in town in Idaho Falls and then also to the desert facilities. Part of our 75th anniversary, we'll, we will be presenting a lot of different opportunities for the community to interact with different things that go on out of the lab. Um, and so, uh, in summer months, we will have open house days for the entire community to come to, for instance, see advanced test reactor and do a community tour, um, to the material fuels, um, uh, complex as well, so there'll be a few opportunities like that also.
Great, thank you, yeah. Yeah, those are great opportunities to visit the lab. My dad worked out there for 38 years and I was, was afraid to ask him what he did because I thought it was so top secret, he'd have to kill me if he told me anything, so. Um, so it's nice to be able to have a little transparency and, uh, for us to really understand better what goes on out there, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and, uh, I will also mention that Liza and one of her colleagues came up and, and met with Scott and me and some of the others, uh, just a couple of weeks ago and we talked about.
Sorry you missed it, the weather prevented his trip coming over.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, well, that's fine. But yeah, we were glad to have them here and, uh, we talked about a lot of good things and opportunities that might be upcoming with the, with the lab and, uh, things that might benefit us here in the city of Rexburg as well, so thank you for that. So this proclamation is number 2024 dash 01, in order to establish support for advanced energy. Whereas the city of Rexburg Idaho recognizes the Idaho Advanced Energy Consortium and their commitment to advancing nuclear and clean energy and their related projects in Idaho and in the region. And whereas the Idaho National Laboratory with IAEC is working with industry and community to produce and support advanced energy technologies needed for a sustainable, safe, secure and efficient energy future. And whereas Idaho has a long history with energy research as home of the first community-powered nuclear energy generation and home to the INL. And whereas Idaho's legacy in nu- nuclear innovation has positioned the state and our communities to lead I- America's energy independence and security. And whereas the development of advanced energy is a key component of Idaho communities' long-term planning that balances economic growth with responsible stewardship of natural resources. And whereas it is vital to Idaho's future that our community invests in long-term strategies for energy creation as well as promote technological leadership and enhance, and enhance national security. And whereas the community supports efforts and policies that provide tools and resources to obtain or deliver affordable, reliable energy for our citizens, communities, businesses and industries. And whereas advanced energy can be part of our regional energy system, planning and operation practices for efficient energy production and trade. And whereas IAEC seeks to strengthen our region's assets, excuse me, resources, capacity and potential for industries, companies and employment they create to start, grow and remain in our communities. And whereas the development of advanced energy can support our rural communities through economic development and diversification efforts, infrastructure investment and workforce training and development. And, that's a long one. Now therefore, I Jerry Merrill Mayor, by virtue of the power and authority vested in me by the state of Idaho, do hereby declare that the city of Rexburg is committed to investing in advanced energy as a core component of Idaho and our nation's long-term energy strategy. And urge all citizens to recognize the importance of advanced energy to our national security, economy and environment. All right, so we will go ahead and sign this and make it official. And, uh, thank you, Liza, for being here, we appreciate you and all that the lab does for our community and, and many of our citizens that work out there. We're looking forward to a lot of great things coming from there with the advanced energy solutions that can be developed out there. So thank you, thank you for being here, we appreciate that.
We don't have to pull on that.
Oh, yeah, we do have to ratify that, I mean, we, we have to, uh, yeah, ratify that. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to ratify this proclamation.
Pass or move?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Colin Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will consider that ratified and official, so thank you. All right, at this time, we will move on to item number nine A, which is the planning and zo- oh, excuse me, before we move on, I do have one other item. Um, and that is, uh, I attend every, uh, once a month, I think on the first Tuesday of the month, I attend a, a meeting called the LEPC, which stands for Local Emergency Planning Committee. And we meet over at the fire station and we talk about how we can be better prepared for any disasters or emergencies that might happen here in Rexburg. And, uh, it, it would include things like what has just happened down in Idaho Falls and Blackfoot where the power was out for, you know, several days and people, uh, needed ways to get into the, out of the cold and things like that, so any of those kind of things as well as floods and earthquakes and things like that, we're trying to plan for. Anyway, they are planning a tabletop, uh, exercise, which means a kind of a, not, not really a full-blown mock disaster, but an exercise to, that we attend and, uh, so that we can see what our role is and what, what we would do, just a, just a way to help us be more prepared. And that is, uh, and I would like to invite any of you who can to attend that, it's on April 3rd, which is the first Tuesday of next month, at 8:30 AM, and it'll be over there at the fire station. Uh, if you can attend, uh, I think it would be great if you could RSVP to me and don't need to do it right now, but if you, if you know you'd like to right now, that's fine, but otherwise just, uh, send me an email or a text message and, uh, can you make it? I need you to be there because I'm actually gonna be on vacation in, in Mexico, so I need you to be there in my place.
We'll swap places.
Yeah.
What date did you say?
Uh, April 3rd.
So Wednesday, but. Okay.
Oh, yeah, today, yeah, yeah, you're right, sorry, I said Tuesday, didn't I? Yeah, first Wednesday of the month, uh, April 3rd, 8:30 AM over at the fire station. So, okay, that's great. Yeah, and, um, if any of the rest of you can be there, that would be great and, uh, it'd be good so that we can know what our role is in the, in the case of an emergency.
Mayor, how much time will that take?
Uh, it'll only be about, uh, I think, what'd you say, 45? One hour max.
An hour.
About an hour.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brad attends that meeting with me, so, and so does Justin.
You know, I've been involved in all those exercises and they're pretty eye-opening of what we grew, what would we do if this and this happened.
Yeah, I know, in fact, I was, I was, uh, sad that it, that it got scheduled when I'm gonna be gone on vacation, but I didn't expect him to reschedule it just around me, so, uh, that's why I'd, I'd like you to be there. And, uh, and then I'll catch up on, I think, oh, they are gonna, they're gonna video it, right? And you say we're gonna video it?
Yeah, we'll record a Zoom, so.
Yeah, we'll record a Zoom so we can, if you can't be there, you could watch it on the, on the Zoom, so that'll be great.
Mr. Mayor, where, where is that located again?
Over at the fire station?
Fire station.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yep, okay. All right, now, let's move on to item number nine A, which is the planning and zoning recommendation to approve the Platts for Summerfield Divisions 11, 12 and 13 located in the Summerfield PUD. That is 900 South, 2400 West with a total of approximately 23 acres and 89 lots with the permits as noted on the agenda here. Um, Mr. Parkinson, can you tell us a little bit about this?
Mayor, council, uh, this was submitted to us here approximately six months ago, we've been working through different things with them, uh, but they have met all of the requirements that we have asked them to do for infrastructure, for roads, for layout, to meet those requirements. And, uh, we presented that to planning and zoning and they have passed that with a request to approve by city council. And so when you look at that, we've, we're showing all three of them right now. This is Phase 11, this part, then you have Phase 12 that takes up this part of it, and then Phase 13. Your townhomes are located right in here, the church is located right over here, to give you an idea. Uh, this is more of a picture of where that will sit with everything in there, but, uh, they have met all of the requirements at this point and we just bring it to you for your recommending it to be approved.
Right, is there any questions? Anyone have questions, yes?
Alan, in planning and zoning, you brought up the map of the, the first plot or, I just was watching it and going through that, you brought up, did you bring up that?
Brought up the master plan.
Yeah, the master plan before?
Um, it takes us a while to get to that one, but, uh, we could probably chase it down, the original, so I gotta be able to get into City Works.
Passworded.
And I don't.
I just wanted, did it change any, that's the reason why, did it change anything from that master plan? That's the only thing.
No, it hasn't.
Because when you're watching it from planning and zoning, I don't see the screen, so I said, I wish you could see that, but.
This, this follows the, the PU2 plan that they have given us.
Okay, that's.
Townhome was kind of a move from.
Ever, you don't need to bring it up, I just wanted to make sure it followed that same plan.
Yeah, it, it matches what they had laid out.
Okay, that's all I wanted, I just wanted to make sure it followed that same type of plan, so.
Yeah, just, uh, just a bit of information too, we actually are looking at, uh, an upgrade for the system in here and, and hopefully maybe be able to put a camera on the screen so that if you're watching it online, you can see the screen too.
And hopefully the sound.
And the sound, yeah, the sound is.
That's number one.
The first.
They're doing, they wanna do all of it.
Yeah, sound is actually the first priority and then if we can do something, that, we'll try to do that too, but anyway, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are there plans to extend 2400 West or 2275 West north into that, um?
Subdivision, just?
Yeah, across the canal?
We require that they put that opportunity there, that if the developer to the north does want to, that connectivity is there for gridding the streets, but they are not planning on connecting at this point, they do not own the ground.
So there's no, there's no plan in place for that subdivision to connect to the south?
It's, these guys have built it into their system so that if they wanted to, they could connect into Summerfield, but then they would have to initiate it from their side and put it in, but we've made them, we've put in that grid work, in fact, if we can zoom in by the townhomes.
In fact, that property up above isn't even in the city, it's not in the city limits, is it?
No, it's not, it's in the county.
Yeah, so, so they'd have to be annexed and everything first before.
But I'm, I just, I'm just wondering if there's a master, if there's a plan, what's it called, West Side Estates?
Yeah, that's part of, okay, if you'll look, blow it up a little higher. Make it a little bigger.
Do we have any kind of an easement or anything through there for a road?
We don't.
No.
No. Uh, their easement, theirs goes through the property line. If you look in the grid, this is designed for a road to be able to connect here and a road to be able to connect here. We asked them to design that in. Uh, this one will eventually continue on because they do own the ground over here. This one would be strictly up to whether this party wants to make a connection in there. We want that cross-connection in all of our subdevelopments so people don't have to go clear out on 12th, go down a ways and then come back in just to get across the, the yard to go to a home.
So worst-case scenario is they'd have to go clear to the west and then north and back, if, if that is development moves to the north. Or fills into the north.
Which it will eventually.
It will.
Yeah, they own that.
So they own that and they'll eventually fill that whole thing in, clear to 33.
They own all of this property, clear up.
Yeah, clear 33 and clear up, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just wondering about connectivity through West Side Estates too.
Get out to the main arteries.
Because we're, we've already proved there's some development to the north out on 33.
Right, up here.
Yeah.
And this is one of the things, it's in our development code and in KES engineering standards, we require them to create connectivity between the developments, just for that reason.
Okay.
To keep it off of the main roads as much as possible so they don't blow up on us.
Alan, is that road, kind of to Eric's point there, is that road in West Side Estates that comes down, yeah, right there?
It stops right there, there's a cul-de-sac.
What's that? Oh, that's just the yellow line, okay, I thought that was a road.
Yeah, this, this is just a cul-de-sac and that's all it's there, there was no plans when this was developed to put anything in here or to go beyond it.
Yeah.
At that point, but it wouldn't be that difficult if they chose to, to, to make some kind of connectivity through here.
Curved it over, yeah.
Someone suggested to me the other day that there is in the, in the original s- site plan for that Westwood, West Side Estates, that there might be some sort of.
Easement or something?
Easement or, or it's in the, has anyone looked at that? I just, it would be too bad if there was, if there is something.
That'd probably be in the county records, but it's something we could check.
Bring up the plat, you can look on the plat.
Oh, can we, okay.
Because if, if there is something there, then it would be nice for the, for the, have the roads line up to meet whatever that, if there's an easement or something in there. I, I just had somebody suggest to me the other day that they thought maybe there was in the original plot, plot plan.
There is no plat listed on this one.
Okay.
Because it would be encircled and it would have, uh, um, if you look over here, Gifford Estates, this was one that was platted and so it has that outline on it, it has the name of the plat.
Okay, so there's no.
So currently there is not one for the rest of this.
Okay.
Okay.
We should make that pretty clear too, because I've had a lot of residents contact me very angry about even the prospect of that, so I just wanna make sure anybody listening knows that there's not a road that's gonna go through there right now.
If it happens, it's gonna be those people wanting to connect to.
It's not, it's not the city doing it, and it's not Summerfield, yeah.
Yeah, we, I've, I've had that question raised two or three times. It just says, "The city's not pushing it."
No.
It's, it's something that they would have to do.
Yeah.
Now, if they were to come in and densify that, split those lots out, put more in there, then if they reach that point where the fire department says, "You now need a second exit", then they would probably have to develop something coming into this for that safety.
Safety purposes.
Yeah, and that, that usually drives a lot of our second entrances.
Did you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, it's, it's in the county, but if you look at density, it doesn't need, well, it's probably built before the county had their cul-de-sac or the, and the city had our whole network, right? Ours is six hundred feet, theirs is, I think, five hundred feet. So if you're looking at density, then you probably wanna look at that coming into compliance with our, or where we don't have cul-de-sac that long. But that's obviously, it's hard if one is just developed or in that neighborhood.
Okay, all right, uh, is there any further discussion or questions about this item? Uh, if not, I would entertain a motion to move forward on this planning and zoning recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the Platts for Summerfield Divisions one, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Move on to item number B, which is the staff recommendation to approve a public-private partnership for a community ice rink. We have, uh, Matt has, uh, got some of the details on that, is that, uh, fill us in a little bit on that. We did meet on this, so you're all pretty familiar with this, and, uh, we'll just update you on some of the conversations we've had since then.
It is.
I'm just gonna pull it up here. So we, we do have, uh, the developers here as well, so as we go through this, if there's questions. And then, um, let me, whoops, yeah, pull that back up. So I, what I'll do, we'll just look at the drawings for a quick second, just so we can kinda get the concept idea out there, and then we'll come back. But keep in mind, this is a letter of intent that we're gonna go through tonight, which is really to move forward and, and hopefully move to formalize a, a final agreement. And so, so as we go through this, keep that in mind. So the proposal is, um, essentially for a developer to come in and build an ice rink. And it, it not, not necessarily has to be in this location, but we're kinda showing the general area. Um, keep in mind up here, this is a potential lap pool area, but this agreement is just looking at this ice rink, ice rink. And, um, you know, originally this was a little higher up. We did slide it down just a little bit, um, so that we don't impact the existing parking right here that would be utilized to help service that building. And then the other thing that, that we, we did is, we felt like we could still actually utilize this soccer field. This is already a smaller soccer field anyways, is for smaller kids, and so we could continue to utilize this. You know, as this facility potentially grows, then you may have to start to put parking out in front of here. But, uh, right now that's kind of the layout of it, and let me show you real quick. Oops, I think it's up. Oh, where's the other agreement, Deb?
We'll just take it, yeah.
I don't wanna mess it up here, but...
Well, yeah, it'll cut across the trail, but we can...
Actually, we're, I can just pull the agreement, it's in the agreement.
Right back to the same spot.
Where'd I find that? Yeah, I see the drawing. Sorry, I can't read very well. Okay, sorry, we're gonna pull it up, but, and then we'll show you the drawing. I can, I will, while she's pulling that up, let me just kinda go through the... It's really about a page of bullet points that we would, we would kinda consider with this. But, um, basically, the city would provide about thirty-five thousand square feet for the building, for the ice rink. And then the developer, they wouldn't own the land, the city would retain ownership of that land. They would have to pay a minimal cost to lease that land each year. And then they would, as the developer, construct and at their own expense, operate, uh, at least initially, that skating rink facility. And then, um, what would happen is they would have to start donating that building to us. And so in year one, they would donate a minimum of four percent. And then potentially, they could do four percent a year up to twenty-five years, that adds up to a hundred percent. But they would have the flexibility to donate more. And that, of course, you know, because they may have years where there's higher tax burdens, and, and so maybe they wanna donate twenty percent in a given year. And so the minimum would be four percent of fair market value. And then, um, okay, did you find it? Oops, she's still looking. Okay, well, I'll keep going through, and then we'll pull it up here in a second. So then the next bullet point is that, that they could agree to operate up to twenty-five years, I kinda mentioned that, and then it, as it, as they get this and start to operate this, as a developer, they'd be entitled to one hundred percent of the cash flow to cover operational expenses with any profits allocated to first repay the development, developers' costs to build that facility, plus a, a rate of return, which we would have to determine what that rate of return is in the agreement. And then at their own discretion, they could continue to operate that up to twenty-five years. But once the developer recoups their total development cost plus the agreed-upon rate of return, um, then the city would actually recoup costs to cover some of the costs that we're gonna put it in upfront, and then there would be a profit share that would start after that. And that has to be determined, what that split would be. And what the idea there is, part of the idea for that profit share is not only to pay back some of the... That's the wrong one. That's not it.
Okay, I don't have it then.
Okay. Let me see if I can just... I've got it.
Oh.
Is that what you're looking for?
No.
Oh, no, that's different.
Sorry.
Okay.
We're, we're not totally set on, you know, that drawing showed exactly where it was. We're, we're still trying to decide whether to slide it up a little more or, or keep it where it is just to get it in closer proximity to the pool in case we ever wanna connect it, connect it up together. So we're still kind of trying to figure out what's the exact best, best, best place for that. So those are some of the details that we're just gonna try to work through. And we figure out what, what is the best way to go. Um, let's see, just, while, while they're pulling that up, uh, so Mike and Robert both said they're good for the tabletop, and I think Eric, you had indicated, when, when I sent out the email, I think you had indicated that you could go, did you, or?
To the...
To the tabletop, uh, emergency planning event on April third?
Yes, yeah, I can, yeah.
You can, okay. All right, so we got three, any...
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna look at my calendar, but not for sure right now.
Okay.
I'm not sure either.
Okay, all right, well, just, just let me know when you figure out for sure, and then I'll, I'll just let them know how many, so that they kinda have an idea. Okay. Yes.
Why are we doing an ice rink? Are there lots of people who want it? Are they trying to make money?
You know what, while, uh, while we're, while we're searching for that, uh, Aiden or Jason, do you wanna address that question about, uh, the demand for, or do you care to do that? If you'd like to, yeah, come on up and, and we'll, we'll talk about that, cause that probably is a question that will pop up. And, uh, and one of, one of, one of the main reasons is, we believe there is some demand based on their experience, but the other reason is, there's very little risk to the city in this proposal. These gentlemen are proposing to build it and run it and get it profitable, and, and there's very little risk to the city, so, is that all we needed to say?
I don't know what we would say, what would we add to that?
Well, maybe, maybe just the demand for hockey and ice skating, I guess.
It's, it's part of the, the youth pro, it's a, it's a new youth program for the city.
Yeah.
Provide youth hockey, we're passionate about it, there's absolutely no cost to the city, we're funding it completely ourselves, so it's, it's win and win, I guess.
So you have a lot of youth here who go play in high school ball?
Actually, they play as far away as August, I know, right now, from high school. So they're having to keep youth.
They practice in August?
August, in the summer.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
These, these gentlemen ran the ice rink, uh, right there on First East two years ago and had real good experience there with it, and so they, they wanna expand on that and make it a more year-round. You know, it's odd that we can't keep ice frozen very well in Rexburg, Idaho. You, you'd think it would be easy, but there are so many days at our ice rink out at the golf course that it was, you know, soft and slushy and, you know, cause we get all these weird fluctuations. And so to be able to build an indoor building that is a really nice ice rink that can be used really potentially year-round, uh, I think it's a real win-win for the community, so I think it's awesome. Did we find that? Oh, we got it right here, okay.
Yeah, that wasn't Deb's fault, I think it was mine.
All right, well, blame Deb for them.
Okay, so I'll just, since we've got it up here, I'll just kinda show you the layout of the, the ice rink. Um, and so this, this would be the entry, the, in that drawing, the parking was kind of up in here. And then you can see, um, now I can see, I gotta see it a little bit here. So you can see a rental area here, and then as you come across, the concessions, kitchen, locker rooms, bathrooms, and locker room, and then you've got, of course, the rink. And then there would be, curling would be inside the rink, right? You'd do that during designated hours, so that you could also do that as well. So, I mean, you've got hockey, open skate, curling, so there's lots of options, so. Any other things that I'm missing for ice? Okay.
Does that say, does that say seating?
Seating, yeah, yeah, there's seating.
Okay, so there is seating.
Uh-huh.
Yep. Yeah, and then, I mean, I'll just quickly mention, if, if down the road, we did come to some type of an agreement on an indoor pool, that would be a separate agreement. The idea would be, you'd see that connected to this building as well.
And I, I think maybe we oughta throw out there, just so that everybody kind of understands, um, the, the idea of, of the pool was kind of in conjunction with it, but we have to keep it separate because, you know, we, we wanna make sure that the rink, uh, performs to what these gentlemen think it will. If it does, we think it will generate money that will help support the pool, because we all know a wintertime pool loses money. Um, but we'd love to have a pool that the high school swim team can use and, and, uh, we can use for swimming lessons and things like that all, all through the wintertime as well. But just, uh, the, uh, the chiller units that help keep the ice frozen put off a, a lot of heat, and so a lot of that heat could be transferred into the pool to help heat the water. So that would save a lot of money on the operational costs of the pool, so, uh, making it a, you know, a joint building that we can use. Uh, not only that, but we can use the same reception facility to, you know, let people in and out so that we don't have to have more staff to be able to run the pool part of it. It would all be the same, same building. So there's a lot of synergisms that we think, uh, can work well, and, you know, I for one, am excited about it, and hopefully it'll, it'll all work out the way we're, the way we're planning. So go ahead, Matt, sorry, oh, yes, question?
I just had a question, so if, if it does cover the trail, then who's going to pay to repair the trail?
We, we, the city would just need to reroute it around the building, just a little bit there.
Yeah, we're, we've committed to take part in that.
We'd add that to our budget and do that.
Yeah.
Quickly, cause we need more trail, not less trail.
Yeah, no, we, we would definitely be recreating the trail, yes.
And, yeah, depending on where that building ends up, you know, maybe more or less of the trail that we'll have to rebuild, so that'll, that'll be a detail that will work out.
Yep. Okay, so I got through to about this bullet point here, so. So should the developer choose to stop operating the facility at any time during that twenty-five years, um, regardless of whether they've recouped their development cost plus the rate of return, they would immediately donate whatever's remaining that's not been donated back to the city, or to the city, sorry. And that would include the building and the equipment as well. And then, um, you know, they can assign this to a third party for management, um, that's fine. And then the developer would provide the financials annually to the city. So the city would have an understanding of, you know, what it, what it takes to run an ice rink, and I think that would be valuable for us. Uh, the city would pay the upfront permit, connection, and impact fees related to the construction of the building, but then we would recoup that, uh, potentially after the developers get their cost plus the mutually agreed-upon rate of return and before that profit sharing kicks in. Uh, parking facilities, we would, we would provide the required parking for the developed facility, acknowledging that there's seasonal variations and demands. Um, you know, Rexburg Rapids, the big thing is, well, what are you gonna do with Rexburg Rapids when it's busy? Most likely, this facility's not gonna be as busy during that time period. And then as you think about it, Rexburg Rapids, really, even with the exclusives after five o'clock, that parking lot starts to open up quite a bit. And so we feel like we can manage that, and then we would be responsible for the maintenance, which we already pay the maintenance on it, so, yes.
Can we see the part where you were talking, but we couldn't see it yet, can we?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't catch everything you were saying.
No, you're, you're good, so I'll just kinda hit it quick. So this is just thirty-five thousand square feet of land for them to construct, we own the land. And then the construction and operation, if you wanna just look through that, but just to recap, uh, they'll donate a minimum of four percent per year, so.
Can operate it up to twenty-five years, but there's options there too, so.
Yeah.
Is there any of those that, uh, that anyone has questions on, uh, any of those points? So we're happy to cover any of those if, if they're not clear.
So we still don't have the predetermined percentage?
Sorry.
Where it says the predetermined percentage for the split, after all the costs to recoup, we still don't know what it is?
No, so that would be negotiated in the final agreement.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yes, so we, we do determine that.
Yeah.
And it, and it's gonna take some time, right, to go through and work through all this, uh? You know, this isn't something that, that we've necessarily done before, so. And Spencer's already started doing research at, research.
And part of that percentage, honestly, kind of, uh, we're working with, with the Rennickers here on, you know, what, what they feel like they're perform is, how it's gonna perform, uh, you know, so that, I mean, you know, they, they're, they're doing this because they want this for the community, and they love hockey, and, uh, which I think is a win-win for the community. But they also, you know, are, uh, they need to be compensated for their time and involvement, you know, and all of the, the time and effort that it's gonna take to do this. And so that's kinda where that percentage will land, is what's, what's a fair percentage there. You know, rate of return on, on the money involved and the, and the, uh, all of the time and effort put into it, so, the, all of those things will go into determining what that is. So...
Okay, so this last bullet point, um, so the city would cover insurance on liability for the land, the assets, equipment, uh, through their insurance provider, so through ICRAIM. So, and then, uh, as I've already mentioned several times, you know, these are, this is the intent, and then we'll, we'll work with them, negotiate, and finalize a, a final agreement that you would see again. So really, tonight, we are asking the City Council if they would motion or be in favor of us as staff and the mayor to work with, with the Rennickers and to finalize this agreement or formalize it into an agreement.
Okay, any questions about that? Or what we're doing here? Okay? If, if there aren't any, I would entertain a motion to, uh, to move forward on this, um, on approving this public-private partnership and, and allowing, uh, mayor and staff to move forward on, on final negotiations for a contract.
Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chambers, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further questions or discussion?
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, so you're saying then you're gonna finalize the contract and it's gonna come back to us for a final approval?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question maybe for the Rennickers. Is this letter of intent, I know there was some urgency to get the chillers ordered. Is this letter of intent sufficient for you to move forward with the ordering of those chillers?
Well, I guess my personal opinion is, by voting yes on this, you are authorizing us to, to enter into a contract, uh, well, to, to get the contract drawn up and, uh, and really move forward. I mean, uh, I guess I would think right now, it's, it's kind of yes or no, and, and basically...
No, because we have to finalize the final contract before they can move forward.
Well, the final, the, the details of the final contract, we're, we're gonna work out, and, and we would have to have, you know, pass, uh, you know, pass the, signing the final contract. But I, I think right now, we're looking to say yes or no, we wanna do this or we don't. Because they need to, they need to be getting stuff on order and, uh, getting it to go, and the, and the contract... And the contract really is not going to be materially different than what we just talked about. I mean, those are the terms that we're, that we've kind of been working on for the last week. And, you know, since we had our meeting, all of the different details that we've been working out. So this is basically what the contract would be. And so we just need to, we need to really kind of make a decision right now, whether we want to move forward with this, yes or no. Because if we're not going to, there's no reason to put it off any longer. But if we are going to, then, you know, these guys need to be able to move forward with ordering parts and materials and things that are, that all have a pretty long waiting list on them. And if we delay too much longer, that's going to cut into the time, you know, for them to be able to get it up and running in the fall, which is going to affect the pro forma, meaning that it may not be as successful as it could be. So it is fairly critical to make a decision, yes or no, are we going to move forward on this? And I think that's kind of what we're saying right here.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we approve this, I mean, the final contract's going to come back to us, but all we'll do is just have those percentages and stuff in there.
Yeah, that's really about anything.
I have a question on that, though.
Okay.
So I'm really excited about this, I don't anticipate anything, but I feel like, how could we approve it until we see the final contract? So I'm confused, if you're saying that this is, that we're moving forward, then I guess I'm just a little confused.
Isn't this saying that we're approve a partnership?
Yes.
A private-public partnership?
Public-private partnership, yeah, and, yeah.
I'd like to hear what our attorney has to say about this.
So, just quickly. These P3 agreements that, they're becoming more and more common with municipalities working. So they call them P3, so it's a public-private partnership. There is, within Idaho, there is no statutory authority that would prevent us from doing this. It creates certain unique contractual and procedural challenges that we'll have to work through. And so that being said, the way that I viewed this, and again, I wasn't, Mr. Zollinger obviously isn't here tonight, I wasn't a party to the exact meetings and conversations that he had with the mayor. The way that I view this is a letter of intent to enter into negotiations for this partnership. And then for it to become finalized, it would have to be presented again to city council to go through those specific terms. And so I do understand what the mayor is saying, where it's, you know, there is some preliminary work that has to be done. But again, as of anything that we do within a municipality, sometimes we will approve a preliminary plat or things like that, and there is some risk involved from the developer in certain situations where they have to perform to certain required standards to finalize those type of things, and to make sure that we are checking all the boxes from both a legal and then just a procedural standpoint. And so the way, and again, I can be, I can, I don't have all the context of what was discussed previously, the way that I viewed this on the agenda. Again, was a letter of intent to enter into negotiations and then finalize those contractual agreements. And so in a formation of contract, again, it takes, and it goes both ways, both for us and then also the rentakers on this side, where they aren't bound just today by today's decision, where this, you know, we set out terms that they don't agree to, and they say, hey, you know, we can't do that, we can't pencil that and make that work, then they're not bound by a letter of intent either. So. Any questions, did I answer your question? Or, and again, I'm happy to hear anything else that was discussed previously, Mr. Mayor, that.
I guess, I mean, we've, that's what we've been doing the last week, is doing these negotiations to get to the point where we've got everything nailed down and what would be in the contract. And so really, I guess, about the only thing that's not final in my mind would be, you know, the predetermined amount there. So, I mean, couldn't this be deemed as a, as an approval to move forward with the contract?
If I'm not mistaken, what we're being asked to do is to enter into a letter of intent that if these, that the final contract does have all of these bullet points covered in a substantial way, that we will move forward with the formal contract.
Yes, if conditions are met, but just,
If conditions are met.
The legal nature of a letter of intent is not a final and binding contract.
Right, yeah, so, and I understand that, but.
Well, I don't, I don't know, it doesn't say anything on this about a letter of intent. It says to approve a public-private partnership. And approving a public-private partnership means we're going to, we're going to enter into a contract. And that's, everything that we've been working on the last week are the terms of that contract that we felt would work and the rentakers felt would work. And so, to me, this seems like we're saying, yes, we're going to do it, or no, we're not. And I don't know.
Looking at a different copy, but what was provided to me, Mayor, was it starts with this letter of intent. And then I'm looking again, and I didn't create this, but the terms outlined in this letter of intent are not final and are subject to negotiation and revision.
And it is missing the percentage, and I feel like, I mean, I enjoy this, the idea of this project, but I don't feel like I could vote on something that I didn't know the percentage of.
As far as I'm concerned, if our percentage was zero, that doesn't bother me. If we're, we don't have to make money as a city.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, no, the percentage is.
I want to know what I'm signing, that's all I'm saying, I want to know what I'm agreeing to, 100%. That's just my opinion, but.
Okay.
And I can't speak to, and maybe, from contractual standpoint, it's not final. From a city procedure, and whether it comes before city council again, and what hearing is required, I would probably defer to Ms. Lovejoy on that, if, how it would then be presented moving forward. But from a contractual standpoint, the contract itself has not been final. The letter of intent has been, it's kind of, I mean, the legal nature of a letter of intent versus a contract is apple and oranges. And so the letter of intent allows you to begin preliminary work on that. But again, the nature of the letter of intent is that parties can then back out.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the reason I asked the question I did is I understand that absent a contract, a letter of intent is the strongest affirmation we can give a project at this point. And I just didn't know if that affirmation in a letter of intent was sufficient for you to move forward, or if you had to wait for a contract. Because obviously, we don't have a contract yet.
And the contract, in this type of agreement, it is unique enough where it is, would be structured outside of just a typical P3 agreement. It is rare enough within, and again, a lot of that is due to some of the concessions and things that the rentakers are graciously putting forward to the city, that limits some of our liability and risk. But still, the nature of this agreement would be complex enough that it would be an in-depth and detailed final contract that addresses very specific needs and questions of liability, of staffing, those types of things, we can't ignore, and we have to flush some of those things out just from a city liability standpoint. I've reached out to individuals in Ada County, Boise City. They haven't, and again, these are common, and they're more common sometimes in transportation-type agreements. University of Idaho has one of the biggest P3 agreements currently signed in the United States that they recently signed. And so it's, they're becoming more common. There are a lot of, any of those issues that I'm talking about, there's nothing within the state of Idaho that prohibits it per statute, and so then it becomes a, it becomes a question of contracting through those things. And nothing that the parties can't sit and work through, given those. And so, issues moving forward, apart from negotiated terms and things like that, there's no statutory provision or anything that would prohibit us moving forward. It would be very specific terms moving forward that could, but again, everything that I've heard from this agreement has been, there's nothing, but, there's been nothing but, you know, cooperation, goodwill brought, and so, working through those complex issues, I don't foresee substantial issues, but we still need time to present those and work through those.
And that's why I see, I think what's been presented, what we see, is very much workable, and we're excited about this. Something we want to go for. Like I say, there is some agency on sign right now, I think we ought to go for it and work with them, continue to work with them, let's move forward on this, so we can get this thing taken care of and done. I think it's a great opportunity for the city, to provide this for the kids and for the community.
Okay.
And I guess that's the point, is the letter of intent is to say, we want this, we want this to happen. We understand the contractual terms have to be worked out, but we're hopeful to the point that we want to.
I guess that was kind of my point.
Let's go forward.
As Mr. Chambers said, this is the strongest affirmation you can give. But from just a strict legal question, if someone later, after signing a letter of intent, came to me and said, hey, you know, project aside, are we bound by this letter of intent if whatever occurs? No, just the nature of a letter of intent is, it's not a final contract. That mean, but the reason that we have this meeting, we've had these negotiations, you have made comments about how interested we are on this, is to give some assurances. But again, it's not assurances that a final and binding contract can give, because it's just different by its nature.
Okay. So, I guess that's, that was my point, is kind of what you said, was that we are, basically what we're saying here is, we want to move forward, and we just need to iron out any of the little contractual details that we need to do. So I'm hoping that that gives you folks enough assurance that we want to move forward.
I would have to say no, it doesn't.
Yeah.
You know, this is sounding like we're almost starting over, and so I'm a bit concerned about that. But I would say no, it's not assurances for us.
Yeah. Yeah.
How long until, do you think, until the final contract would be negotiated?
Again, I don't think I can. I think it could be, it could be, you know what, more so than just legal standard, because the legal issues could be worked through relatively quickly. I'd have to defer to Matt on any of the financial issues or financial questions that we may have in any other, any of the other departments. From a contractual standpoint, it can be done in a matter of weeks, not months, I would say. But again, it is, I'm not going to lie and say that it's not a complex agreement. I mean, it is an agreement in which, as Matt said, we haven't done those things before. And so, making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And again, the way that I looked at this on the agenda, assurances or not, is this was not presented as a final contract. This is a letter of intent to enter into preliminary work and negotiations.
But going back to what Mr. Chambers said, it's a very strong, I mean, I think I'm in favor of it, to go forward on it, to get this thing moving. It's a strong, but we can't sit there and sign a contract because we don't have it yet. But we're definitely saying, yes, let's do this, from my aspect of it. I don't know what the other council says, but that's from my aspect of it.
Just a question. We, I don't know how it works, but we can, could we, I'm not saying we should, but could we give the mayor and our attorney power to negotiate this contract and sign and enter into the contract without it coming back to us?
There is nothing from a, so it's not governed under LUPA, like the Land Use Planning Act. There's nothing from a statutory provision, if you would choose to do those type of things. But again, so there's nothing statutorily preventing you from doing that.
I mean, do we normally approve any contract that comes before the city as a council?
And again, I'm not.
I would like to see it.
The biggest thing is, there's a sense of like, and this is just the reality of the situation, I wouldn't be doing my job as a legal. If we put a vending machine, or like a quarter machine, gumball machine, in the city, I would expect a page and a half of a contract. A complex, multi-year,
Government, come on.
Multi-party, public-private partnership involving numerous entities and outcomes and possibilities. It's nothing that can just be finalized within a page and a half. It is a significant and complex legal agreement that would take place. And so, to say that, it's malpractice on my part to say that a page and a half would be sufficient to bind the city into a disagreement.
Okay.
Didn't answer my question, but that's okay.
Procedurally, I don't know procedurally from a, if it's a purchasing, because again, this, it's unique enough that we are donating land, but structurally, we're not, does it require purchasing authority and power under?
We're not buying anything, which is what would cause me some heartburn as far as monetary.
And maybe that shows some of the, it's just a unique proposal, and so.
Yeah, from the finance side, you know, you guys would go through and have to budget some of those expenses, right? And that would be part of your budget process that we're going into. Because those aren't, we're not going to pay those, you know, day one, those are going to happen later. And so there would be that. I think as Spencer mentioned, you know, we have to probably firm up the insurance side of things, just make sure that that's, that ICREM's good with the agreement, right? So that's going to take some time. But other than that, you know, I think as fast as these guys can get a legal document out, we can work through those issues relatively quick. I think Spencer's right, I think it's a matter of weeks, not months.
About days. Can we do it in days? Instead of weeks?
No, I mean, 14 days, maybe.
But can I just point out how long things in the government take? So I feel like this is like the fast track already, because if we were planning something on our own, it would be, you know, at least a year. So I feel like we are moving at a pretty fast clip for government. So I think we could keep it in perspective.
If it was contingent on myself or Mr. Zollinger doing the work, then absolutely, we could do it in days. But unfortunately, in this type of agreement, it would, it takes answers from individuals who wouldn't be bound by our same timeline and the same pace in which we're trying to get those answers. And so that could slow it up. And so the reason I say no is just because I don't know, working through some of those liability and insurance issues moving forward, if we can get those things, those, like I said, I think realistically, I could get those answers in weeks, hopefully not many weeks.
Mr. Zollinger's answers to the liability things was he didn't feel like it would be a problem.
Yeah, and he doesn't feel like it is, but I think that we have to do our due diligence and we'll have a contract agreed.
Well, my worry is that we, you know, we diddle around and don't get it done in time for them to be able to get their building built and get things operational, you know, for the fall. And then that, like I said, affects the pro forma, which affects, you know, the ability to be able to, you know, do things in a timely fashion and make it as successful as possible. And, you know, I just feel like we need to do what we can to try to keep it moving forward as quickly as possible.
Agreed, and just to, a couple of the insurance questions there, we're hopeful that those things can work out, and those happens, but just as a quick example, I mean, it's great for the community, but an employee, you know, or somebody's getting on the ice, slips and falls and gets a concussion. Then just a very basic question when we called it the city is, you know, hey, my kid was injured at the place. Who was supervising him, whatever, are those city or private employees? Is that covered under ICREM? Is that covered under ICRIMP? Just those types of things that, again, we can work through those and we can figure those out, but we have to do those, we have to take the necessary steps and check the boxes with ICRIMP to make sure that not only we're protecting ourselves, but that we're not putting the rentakers in an untenable situation, that we're not putting them in a situation where their liability is, when all of a sudden ICRIMP won't cover something and they're placed in a situation that could affect them as well. So, again, those are some of the questions that I have that we have to work through, but we will do it as, as quickly as we can.
But I do feel like what Eric said is that we can give you guys authority to be able to do that, figure out this contract, to get this going, to move forward on this and, and not move it off.
Yeah, and I think that's really what the intent...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we just did.
What you just did, what do you mean?
The letter of intent that we just approved was so that they...
Well, we haven't approved it yet.
No, that we're approving. Is to give them the authority to look into all that, right? And then they bring that information back to us and then we approve that.
For instance, within the contract, like Matt said, if, if, if in that negotiation we have to, we have to approve, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars worth of funds with parking or something like that, that as part of the budgetary process that's brought to you independent of, am I correct there or is it...
Yeah, and honestly, that's, that's why I said fourteen days because you meet again in fourteen days, right? So, so I'm just saying that, yeah, I think we can get, we can work on it. And then the timing of what Spencer's talking about, that may fall in the next fiscal year, right? You know, we just have to put the timing together. But you may have to do a budget adjustment this year as well.
For what?
Okay. All right, well, so what we need then is a, the, the staff has recommended that we approve the public-private partnership and allow us to move forward as quickly as possible on finalizing the contract. So, that's, I mean, I don't, honestly, I don't, yeah, I guess that's something, I was gonna say, do we even really need an action item for that or do we just? I mean, you kind of already gave us that permission in our last meeting, so I'm not sure if this is even...
We haven't, we haven't, it's never been an action item.
And that was not in the public eye, so it's different.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then let's go ahead and move forward with this item. And I would entertain a motion to approve this.
I already moved.
You moved it?
We already had a motion seconded.
Was it Eric?
Who seconded it? Eric?
Eric did.
Councilmember Eric Erickson? Oh, that's right, because I said further discussion and that came up. Okay.
Can we read, can you read back the motion?
Yeah, the motion on the table is to approve a public-private partnership for a community ice rink. And I would add to that, if you're okay with, with that, is to authorize the staff, the mayor and staff to move forward as quickly as possible in, in finalizing the, the contract. Is that good?
Yeah, approve a public-private partnership that is affirmed by a letter of intent.
Right, okay. Affirmed by a letter of intent, all right.
I don't think we're authorizing the mayor and council to sign a final agreement.
We are not, yeah.
I didn't say that. I just said to negotiate a final agreement.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, and then we'll, then we'll prevent, present the final agreement to you for us to be able to sign it. As soon as we get it, as soon as we get it done, and we'll do that as quickly as possible, might even, we might even could notice and call a special meeting to do that if, if there's any chance we can get it done quicker, which we'll try to do. So, does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We will move forward ASAP on that item. Okay. All right. Next item is item 10A, item number one, which is the new policy adoption on a season pass discount for qualified city-county retired employees. And this is, obviously, this is a tabled item, so I need a motion to remove this item from the table if you so desire to do that.
I make that motion to move it from the table.
Okay. Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will untable this item and open the, open the discussion on this item. Let's see.
Do you want me to show you?
Yeah, yeah, if you would please.
So, just to bring everybody up to speed, so originally, this was proposed...
Just say forget it.
This was proposed at twenty years. And so, I think everybody's seen this, right? I, I missed the last meeting, but you guys have seen this document, haven't you? If not, I'll go through it. Sounds like no. Okay.
We saw the actual document.
All right. So, I wasn't sure if you, it was in your packet last time, so. So, this is the proposal. This was taken to the golf board and they recommended it. It was also went to the county commissioners and they actually recommended it without the redlined changes that I'll show you here in a second. But essentially, what it is, is if you're a qualified retired individual of either the county or the city, you get a fifty percent discount on a individual season pass. But then we have to go in, we have to define, you know, what is a qualified retired person? And so, originally, we went in and we said, "Well, you, you, you must have retired from the city of Rexburg or Madison County and had been a regular full-time employee for twenty years." And we can still do that. That's how the county passed it. But one of the other things that, that we wanted to throw out as an option is, is you could also look at it as if, if they have met the Percy rule of eighty or ninety or the age requirement of a Percy service retirement. The other thing is, is you could do fifteen years. You could go down in years. You could also not adopt it, of course, as well. And so, there's, there's lots of options, right? We did send an email back out to the golf board just to get their feedback as to what their thoughts were if it was to not be the twenty years. And they're just a recommending committee. And, you know, some of them, some of them said, "Keep it at the twenty." Some of them said, "Don't do it, but if you do it, keep it longer." Some of them came back at fifteen years. I would say in general, most of them were comfortable, probably the, the majority of them in that fifteen to twenty-year range. This Percy rule actually is good too because you're not gonna get to the, generally, you get to the rule of eighty or ninety unless you're twenty years plus, you know, twenty to thirty years really. And so, it's gonna actually be far more. Go ahead.
What is the age requirement of a Percy service retirement?
So, what it is, is...
Plus service.
Yeah, it's your, how many years you worked plus your age?
Has to equal, has to equal ninety.
If you work at the city thirty years, you have to be sixty years of age to hit ninety.
Well, that's the rule of eighty or ninety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, what's the difference between the rule of eighty or ninety or the age requirement of a Percy service retirement?
Age requirement is sixty-five years old as defined by Percy right now. And that can change.
Does that mean that anyone who retires from the city that is sixty-five, even though they worked one year, would qualify?
Yep. As long as, well, they have to meet the Percy service retirement. I think you actually have to do five years.
Five years to be, yeah, Percy vested.
If they came on at sixty, worked for five years, then they would be eligible.
Yep. If, if you adopt the, you know, the Percy service retirement...
I would drop that part of it. The rule of eighty or ninety is fine, but the age requirement of a Percy service retirement, that's a little broad.
I, I mean, the reason why we bring it in is if somebody comes in late in their career, say they're fifty years old, they would have to work fifteen years to get to that, right? And so, you could also say that they have to meet one of those plus, and it has to, if it's the Percy service retirement, maybe you just say you have to be fifteen years or more. I mean, we could add that as well. There's some flexibility there.
My first question is, do we even want to do this? I mean, it seems to me like it opens a can of worms, no matter how you look at it. If we do the age thing, you know, if you say twenty, okay, what about the guy who works eighteen, nineteen years? Do...
Needs to work four years.
Well...
Keeps him another year.
No, I think that's ridiculous because, you know, I mean, sorry, but this was presented as a way to, to recruit and retain employees. I don't believe this is gonna...
And reward.
Huh?
And reward.
I would say...
That's all it is really, is a reward. It's, it, it has no recruitment value, no retention value. Nobody's gonna say, "Oh, I'm gonna work five more years so I can get that half-price golf pass." You know, there, there's very little value. And the thing that, that I don't want to create is a problem. You guys can all vote for it and say, "Oh, yeah, this is a great thing. I vote for it." And then guess who has to deal with it when somebody comes in and says, "Well, how come I don't get it? Because I worked nineteen years and I..." You know, and then guess who has to deal with it? Me and Terry, you know, and you guys don't have to worry about it. So, I don't want to create problems for the management to have to deal with this kind of stuff. I would either rather just not do it, because, to be honest with you, I don't think we really need it. But if we're gonna do it, then we need to offer it to probably everybody that, that is a retirement-qualified person, you know? That's, that's my opinion, but I don't, Brian, you had an opinion?
Yeah, well, I agree. I feel like this is a special interest thing because we don't offer any other kind of discounts when people retire. I think we give a great retirement package to people. So, I don't feel like we need it and I agree with you, but then what's next? And then I feel like we've got, it's just really confusing. And then are we gonna discount Rexburg Rapids? And are we gonna discount all these other things? And I think it's a special interest that it's serving. And I don't understand why we're doing that. It's not gonna serve a lot of people and I don't understand the point of it, except for a special interest thing.
Yes, Councilmember Erickson.
I think it's something that we, I mean, it's something we offer right now and it's something we give to employees right now. It's nothing that costs the city, the county, anything. It's a joint entity from the city-county. It's a reward. Then putting the time in to serve there. I don't have a problem with putting that Percy rule of eighty, ninety because you're still getting the senior people that's put the time in here, served the fifteen years or twenty years, that's gonna use this probably two to three, maybe five years. They're gonna bring other people with them to go out there golf. It's gonna cause more money coming in for the golf, which we need. We're finally broke even this year. So, I think we, it's a good thing for the community. It's a good thing for the employees to have. It's something we offer right now.
I don't, I don't think that it will be a problem administering it. I mean, if, if we were to, if we were to...
If we do it right, it won't be.
Yeah, I mean, all you get, you know, if they work nineteen years, I'm sorry, but you didn't work the twenty years required by the, by the agreement. I'm sorry, but, you know, it's a full price.
Yeah, but is it, to me, it's a problem to set it up that way because you go, I mean, basically, all it is, is it's a, it's a thank you, it's a thank you gift, really.
Yeah, that's all it is.
So, so basically, if, if, you know, Mike works on the ambulance crew for eighteen, nineteen years instead of twenty, well, your time, you know, that eighteen years really wasn't worth a thank you gift. That, that's what we're gonna see.
If you go with the Percy requirement, then if you're eighteen, nineteen, you meet Percy, then your retirement, Percy retirement, not just when you wanna quit.
Then we've got five-year people, right?
Well, but if they hit Percy, they hit Percy. I mean, that's, you're just...
I don't know, it's still kind of a, a bit of a can of worms.
Yeah. I have one more question.
I mean, you can remove that one if you want, but I don't know. The thing to keep in mind with...
If we really want to do it, my personal opinion is if we really want to do it, we probably ought to just say Percy vested people, which is five years because anything over five years is a pretty good career. Or, or we ought to just say open to anybody that retires because honestly, people who retire from the city generally are gonna be here quite a, quite a few years. You know, it's, you know...
Well, I don't have a problem with that, with people retiring.
And I would leave the eighty, ninety Percy, just like that right there.
But then you're excluding people. I mean, it's kind of the same thing really.
Because they're gonna be retiring, they're gonna be vested five years to fifteen years.
If you do it for, if you do it for anybody that retires, just retired, they say they worked ten years and just quitting, they go to another job, then you're gonna have more of it. If you take and have it that they have to Percy retire, then they're, they've gone through all the Percy requirements and then they're, they're retiring. They're not just quitting.
Yeah.
Because they're tired of the job.
What were your thoughts?
I'm just curious why it's golf. Like, we don't offer any other service, so why are we doing it for golf? I guess I'm just...
That, that was kind of my other concern about the can of worms thing is, you know, if somebody gonna come and say, "Well, I don't, I don't play golf, but, you know..."
Yeah, could I have something else in the blue of it?
Can I have the best of this or can I have the best of that?
Yeah, so I just, I guess I'm just...
And then really, in fairness, we probably should do something like that, but I was just going, do we really want to open that can of worms? To have to make all of those decisions and concessions and, you know, this or that or the other? That, that's, that's kind of my thing. Because, because really, you know, the, the county says, "Oh, yeah, we're fine with it." Well, guess what? They're not gonna have to deal with it because we're the ones who manage it, right? And so...
Well, their, their HR's gonna have to manage it too, just like we...
No, they would, yeah.
They'll, they'll do it on the same thing we are with HR.
Yeah, we're not gonna deal with county employees.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, to me, this is a simple thing that we give our employees. I mean, I don't have a problem with the retirement Percy eighty, ninety, like you have it there. You're still sixty-five, you're still older, you're gonna get a few years from the user's facility. They put time in you, the twenty years. I just think it's a good thing to offer our employees.
Well, we already offer, we already offer...
And the same thing now.
And there's a senior discount too at the golf course, so it's very nice. So, I don't even understand.
So, we already have that. So, that's my thing is I'm guessing, why do we need to do this? Because we already offer, a, a city employee can get, you know, can buy a city pass for half-price.
A city employee can, can a retired employee can?
Oh, well, yeah, that's true. You're retired.
To tell you the truth, you worked forty years like I did, the city gives you absolutely nothing.
Bull crap. You've got a pretty nice retirement there, buddy.
Oh, I know, I know, but it's not because the city gave it to me. But what I'm saying is I worked...
You were paid for every one of those years you worked.
I know, I know, I know, I'm, I'm not saying that.
You wanna wrestle for it?
What I'm saying is I don't give you any, there's nothing else that you get. Like, don't get insurance opportunities. You don't get other...
Neither did I.
I know, I know, I know. Same thing to everybody else.
I think we do pretty well, I would say.
You worked forty years and...
I guess, I guess part of my, my...
You know, I mean, I don't care. I don't golf.
Part of my thing too, well, I don't know. I, to me, it just seems like it's open. Maybe it would, maybe nobody would care and it wouldn't be a big deal. But I, I just see, see it as kind of opening a can of worms for people saying, "Well, you know, you gave them this, why, why don't I get something, you know? And how come, you know, I, I worked this number of years and I don't get a thank you of that because I play golf and..."
Yeah, it seems hyper-focused.
But any one of them could take advantage of this if they worked this, this, anyone could take it. Even Mike, if he had never golfed, he could start golfing. Anybody has a chance to take advantage of it.
So, I worked fifteen years and I'm sixty-seven years old. Do, do I really have to work five more years to get a thank you?
No, I'm saying off this, you're retiring, you're Percy eighty, ninety, at the age of retirement. You get that. So, you get it. I just think it's a reward for them to...
I don't, I'm not talking about me. I'm just talking about people who work this many years.
And they get it.
I couldn't care less. I can afford to buy a season pass if I want to. And, and to be honest with you, I think most of our employees who've worked twenty years or more are getting a good enough retirement that they can afford it to, you know? So, that, that's one of the reasons I'm thinking, why do we, why are we even messing with this?
Well, part of this is, I mean, I brought it up and I'll read. I had several, several, not just a few, just several retired employees saying, "Hey, we got this when we worked here. Would it be possible to get it after we retire?" So, I brought it up and I think it's a good thing. I, it doesn't cost us anything and we'll probably make money on it. So, that's why I brought it up. So, I think, I do, I still think it's a good thing. I think it doesn't cost us much, it doesn't cost us anything to offer this. We give it already to our employees.
It's not true. I mean, it costs you the other half of that pass if you're, I mean, we're cutting revenue off of the golf course, but I agree with what you're saying. They'll probably bring other people with them, so...
We'll make money on this.
But are they gonna do that anyway? You know? You know? So I, I don't know, to me, it's needless, but what are your thought, I mean?
Oh, I was just gonna make a motion that probably everyone will vote down to me, but I would like to make a motion that we do not adopt the season pass discount as it has been presented.
Okay, is there enough support for that motion to, to have a second? Does anyone want to second that motion?
You know, this is really tough, because.
It was worth a try.
We, we, we got, we got three members of the council that are gonna, that are, the mayor and two members of the council that are gonna personally benefit from this. I'm sorry, I'm just saying it. It's hard for me to vote against that, against you three.
Oh, well, it's hard for me to vote for it, because it is gonna benefit them and I think it looks self-serving for us.
But they're not the only ones that'll benefit, there's, there's, there's many others. But, but personally, I'm more, I'm more in the camp of it's not necessary. That's my personal opinion. But it's hard not to vote with, with, you know, it's, it's hard to vote against it. Anyway, that's, sorry, that's my two cents worth.
So are you seconding that motion?
No, I'm not.
It said, I tried.
So, so I'll make the motions.
So can I make a motion? No one.
I have an emotion that no one can second.
It dies, it dies for lack of a second, is what happens there.
Do we table it until we have a full council?
Oh, that's up to you guys, if you want to.
I think, I think we discussed this and I don't, I don't wanna keep beating a dead horse.
Well, that's me too, I don't think we wanna continue it on, but, well, so, so here was my other thought. What if we said, because I honestly think there will be issues, and maybe not that many, but I just don't wanna create a situation where we have to, you know, fight over this again. So one of my other thoughts was, what if we, what if we put an age on it and, which would be the Percy, the Percy qual, Percy vesting, which is five years? We say anyone that's Percy vested can qualify if they retire from the city. That's five years. Really, if you're less than five years, it really isn't, you, you know, you, basically, you're working here and then you're quitting and moving on. You know, once they've been here five years, they're, the chances of them moving on to be a fifteen, twenty-year employee are probably pretty good. So I'm, so I, I guess I'm saying, if we're gonna do it, let's, let's say, anyone that's Percy vested is eligible and that opens it up to anybody, it's, it's a wider spectrum of people. Yeah, it'll cost us a little more money, but maybe like Colin says, it, maybe it'll, it'll make us some money in the long run, because they'll bring friends with them and family and stuff, so.
But doesn't that mean every council member, you're, that serves five years? So all of them are gonna be eligible too?
You know, I think council members ought to be.
It actually says, regular full-time employees.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's not, then not just Percy vested, because we will be.
We could put that in there, we could say, we could say Percy vested, regular full-time employees.
Okay.
That would, if you wanna do it that way.
With, with the city of Rexburg, because I'm Percy vested.
Oh, yeah, with the city of Rexburg, yeah, full-time employees of the city of Rexburg.
Yeah, so I.
And that's why I kinda like what they put up there, I mean, that's not what we had there, we had twenty years. That's why I like to meet the Percy rule of eighty, ninety, age requirement, Percy service retirement. That would almost imply that you get that, plus you're still, still here at the city or county.
Yeah, but then doesn't that, doesn't that push it up to being more like a twenty-year?
No, if you're here fifteen years and retire at sixty-five or sixty-three, if you're five years and retire, you're still, you're still there, you're just older in age.
Oh, okay.
You're just pushing up that age, so you don't get a thirty-five-year-old. That's why I'm worried about doing the five years. Because all of a sudden, they, they, you get thirty-five and they get for next twenty-five, thirty years.
Yeah, that's crazy.
That, to me, let's push it up there, so they put the time in, so you get.
So you're thinking this makes more sense?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, I, I think I'm good with that, if.
So as written, removing the strike.
Yes, and just keeping up that top one.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
What do you think, Brianna? What do you feel?
I don't know on it.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Can I make the motion then?
Well, yes, you can.
We're here all night, please.
Yes, you can.
Can I make the motion that we, let me see where I'm at? That we adopt the season pass for qualified city and county, I guess it's just city, employees that meets the rule that we presented there in the, the policy?
Okay.
So you're talking this part, right?
Are we clear on that?
Meets the rule of eighty, ninety, of age requirement of Percy service retirement.
Okay.
Or.
All right, is everybody clear on that?
And I, I don't wanna muddy the waters anymore, but if we pass this and the county doesn't.
County.
They passed, they passed this.
They, they passed it with the twenty-year thing, but they indicated to us that they would be willing to modify that.
They'll follow us.
If, if it makes sense.
They've said they would.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they said they would. They want, they wanna know why, you know, but we can explain that, I think.
And they did not want us to change anything without going back to the golf board and that's what we did, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and honestly, even if they said, well, we wanna do ours at twenty, do we care?
That's true, they could do theirs different than we do ours, so, yeah.
Well, that's why I was asking, I didn't know if that muddied the waters.
I guess it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't have to be the same. Yeah, so just, it'd just be like we have a better policy again. Okay, so we do have a motion on the table, let's see, did someone second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Council President Walker. Any further discussion? No? All right, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, one opposed? All right, that motion passed?
I've also gotta vote against it.
Oh, you vote no?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's three to two, motion passes.
Well, you should have seconded my motion.
You can have that. Okay, we will move on, we are done with that item. Hallelujah. All right. Let's, we have no second readings. One third reading, which is ordinance number thirteen oh nine, creation of local improvement district fifty-three. Unless there's any discussion on this, I would entertain a motion to consider this ordinance third read.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes, we will consider ordinance thirteen oh nine, third read. All right, we'll move on to item number eleven, which is the consent calendar, which includes the formal city council action, oh, sorry, this includes the minutes, I'm getting a little loopy here. The minutes from the February twenty-first and twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four meetings and the approval of the city of Rexburg bills. Is there a motion to approve these items?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further discussion or questions on those items? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will, that motion passes. At this time, we, basically, we had these executive session on the calendar in case we needed it, which we pretty much already talked about, the item, it was basically to talk more about the, the ice skating rink if we needed to have an executive session that way. Is there anyone who feels like that we need to go into executive session, discuss any more details? Or are you, are you okay with what we already did on that? Good? Okay, all right, we will dispense with the executive session at this point in time. Item number thirteen is economic development, review and approval of city center properties request for the proposal of the development of approximately two-point-eight acres located at Oran Carlson Avenue here in town. So Scott, you've been patiently waiting, thank you for your patience. We know that you've been, been entertained very well, so.
Well, I'm gonna make mine really, really easy for you, hopefully, there's not a ton. We, as you know, we've received proposals back for the RFP for redevelopment of the downtown. The selection committee has chosen Alpha Development, they are recommending that. That recommendation went to the board of the urban renewal today at noon. They went ahead and approved that recommendation, and I'll explain the recommendation in just a minute. And we're simply coming to you tonight to do the same. The recommendation is simply that it gives us the ability to enter into negotiations. So there is no contract, there is nothing. It is simply, we approve staff moving into negotiations with Alpha Development for the redevelopment of those three parcels in the downtown. So, any questions?
Any questions about this item?
Scott, I might just jump in. We had four responders to our RFP and quite frankly, all of them were good proposals. In fact, I think all of us hope that the city can generate some opportunities with those who are not selected to do something in Rexburg. But Alpha is the only one that proposed on all three sites. And that was important to us, to have that. And, and there, there was a strong proposal, it wasn't just they proposed on all three, they really were a better fit for the vision that we established for the downtown. So it, it did go through a group of seventeen evaluators, reviewers, urban renewal agency. I would recommend that we approve this with Alpha.
Okay, thank you, appreciate those.
And I would make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, okay, there's a motion and there, we can have a second and then there's time for discussion if there are any other questions after the second. So I'll go here, second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erick, I mean, Colin Erickson. Okay, is there any questions or discussion on this item before we move forward? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes, we will go ahead with our negotiations with the Alpha Development Group. Okay, thank you, Scott, that was much easier. Okay, we are at item number fourteen, which is adjournment.[1741.94]